All right. Stand by. All right. Okay, so I'm told that we're live, which is wonderful. We have an issue with the monitor. We can't see ourselves, but that's all right. We, dirty little secret, we like to look at ourselves in the monitor. Okay, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the City Council's special study session for Tuesday, January 24, 2023. I now call the meeting to order. Would everybody please stand, face the flag, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to your beloved, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Thank you. Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Here.
Councilmember Gamaros?
Here.
Councilmember Harper?
Here.
Mayor Protem Harlan?
Here.
Mayor Stevens?
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilmember Marr is absent or arriving late.
Yeah, she's running late. She'll be here in a bit. Okay, so the first, so I'm sorry, can you read the title, please?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, we are having techni-- oh, they just popped up.
Okay.
Like they're resetting it, so it might pop up.
It's, it's okay. Are we still live?
Yes, we are.
Okay, now we can see each other.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, please read the title.
Parks and Community Services Department overview and special project update presentation by Mr. Minter, Parks and Community Services Director.
Okay, so this is our first study session of this new year, and just remember some ground rules about study sessions. They're a lot more informal. We can call, we're allowed to call each other by our first names. And so we, we're going to start with, this is a study session about our Parks Department and parks and our programming and things of that nature. So we're going to start with a public comment. Normally for study sessions, public comment is two minutes, but we're going to extend it today to three minutes. So anybody who wishes to speak on this item from the public can, and you can come to the lecterns, either one, if you're in the chambers, or if you're on Zoom, raise your hand, or do, I think it's, is it star nine or star six? Star nine, right? Yeah, star nine, if you want to speak. So anyway, this is your big opportunity. I don't see anybody rushing to the podium. If anybody wants to speak, you get three minutes. What, what if I said four, four minutes? Going four minutes? Do I hear anybody? No, no. Going once, going twice? No. Okay, so anybody on Zoom that wishes to address us?
Yes, first speaker is Kim Hendricks, please.
Ms. Hendricks, thank you very much. You have the floor.
Thank you. I wish actually Ms. Marr was there, but I'm glad that this is being recorded. I wanted to talk about Fairview Park. It is a nature park with endangered species. And I see in the attachment, it does say your attachment of the budget for 2022, '23, that it's a, you partner with, it's a flying field for model gliders. And I heard this at the City Council meeting, the little boy that I know who sent them up, and, and I heard Mrs. or Ms. Marr's response, "It's not a flying field. It's a vernal pool watershed. The CEQA and EIR wasn't done on it, but it needs to be done on it if you want to call it a fly field. It's very misleading to the public to keep the signage up calling it a fly field." When I went out there this weekend, it's like a Wild West out there. There were, there was rockets, there were drones. I called a park ranger, there was a park ranger, he came, a really nice young man, in fact, who went to school with my son at Estancia, and he said that it was unlawful, but enforcement was questionable. And I asked him, "What did that mean?" And he said he didn't know, that's what he was told, and that as a parent, it sounds to me like, "I don't want you to do it, but if you do it, I'm not going to do anything about it." And that is not okay, because the city is supposed to be protecting the vernal pool watershed. Please refer to our Chatton, Brown, Carson, and Minter Fairview Park Alliance's letter to the city June 17, 2019 regarding that area. So that needs to be addressed and maybe hire a private person, a company, a contractor, you don't have to pay benefits, but the city is not protecting it properly, and it should be protected. Fairview Park Alliance sees that there's money, the restoration bluffs money, that was an emergency repair done a few years ago, so that men money, there should be extra money. There are many projects that haven't even been started in Fairview Park that have been going on for, I don't know, like 10 years, they've been on the capital improvement program, but I haven't seen them started. I'm very happy with Mr. Minter and Mr. Dalton with allow, with working with Fairview Park Alliance, trying to follow the rules, trying to follow the federal laws, and, but it's, it's been very frustrating, because they seem like to have their hands tied, because City Council somehow thinks it's okay to keep the signage up, to mislead the public. And it's not okay. And so that's something I was told to say, and we all agreed on, at Fairview Park Alliance.
Ms. Hendricks?
And we hope you guys will do something about it. Sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, it's okay, but your three minutes are up.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet. Thanks for calling in.
All righty.
Mr. Mayor, no further speakers.
Okay, so we'll close public comment, and now we're going to get a presentation from staff, and so I'm going to give the floor to our city manager. We'll call her Loriann today, that's the name she'll go by, and so Loriann, you have the floor.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. That's a good name to go by, thank you, I appreciate that. Tonight, we're really excited to begin the first of a series of presentations that we'll be making to you in the coming months regarding the city's departments, all the different departments that we have, their operations, their staffing levels, the programs and services that they oversee, major capital projects that they'll be involved in, the stakeholder groups that they do business with, that they represent the city on behalf of, and then any other special projects that they are working on, that we wanted to give you a status update on. The reason we're doing this is twofold. One, you have requested to have information regarding our departments and their operations. It's been a few years since we've done that, and so this is a great opportunity for, for everyone to get a refresher, even for me as a city manager, just preparing for this particular presentation this evening. There were a lot of nuances and specific details about some of our Parks and Community Services Department's operations that were even revelatory to me, and so I'm really hoping that this will be a very informative presentation. As you mentioned, Mayor, it is a study session format, and so what we're looking for today is dialogue, feedback, your assistance in making sure that we're headed on the right track in this particular department. We'll also be sharing with you some challenges and opportunities, how we're doing with our staffing levels, our budgetary concerns. We have great, in this particular department, great opportunities to do some major capital projects, so we wanted to talk to you about that, and those projects have not yet begun, and so we'll be talking about the next steps for those. But overall, a good opportunity for us to discuss our different department operations and programs as we go into two very key processes. First, the strategic planning retreat, we're hoping to schedule for this first quarter of 2023, so we wanted to have this information front and center as we go into our strategic planning retreat in a couple of months, hopefully, and we'll send you some additional dates to consider for that with a facilitator as we have in the past, but then also our budget process. And so right now, we're in the throes of the beginning of our budget process. Our finance director, Cara Molina, had a budget kickoff and is working with all the departments on their budget requests for the upcoming year, starting July 1. And so these conversations will be timely in terms of the strategic planning retreat, getting your feedback on priorities, goals, and objectives, and then also for our budget, since the budget represents those priorities, goals, and objectives, and the funding that we need to put to meet those, those goals and objectives. Next month, we will bring to you Development Services, and we have a schedule that I've worked out with the department heads on the future presentations, but for tonight, we're going to be starting with our wonderful Parks and Community Services Department, and so with that, I want to turn it over to our director of the department, Jason Minter.
Thank you very much, Loriann. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Jason Minter, Parks and Community Services Director, and I'm proud to have some of my staff members here with me. We have our Recreation Services Manager, Monique Viasenior. We have our Recreation Supervisor, Ashley Thomas, and our other Recreation Supervisor, Kevin Stoddard, and each of them will be taking some slides, some slides before you tonight. As Loriann mentioned, we're doing, this is a kind of a summary of what you're going to hear about tonight. We're going to talk about our department staffing and budget, we're going to talk about programs and operations, we're going to go over some of our major capital improvement projects, as well as master plan projects, we're going to go over current challenges, as well as opportunities, and then talk about next steps for the future. It's important that we start with our mission. The Parks and Community Services Department is committed to enhancing the community through the delivery of innovative recreational programs, quality parks and facilities, and services that promote social, physical, and emotional well-being. In terms of staffing, we have 18 full-time employees currently, all of them are filled. We have about 70 part-time FTEs, which in the past has been up to about 154 employees. These employees take care of all of the programs, facilities, and operations that we're going to talk about tonight. As I mentioned, back in fiscal year 18 to 19, we had about 154 part-time staff. Currently, we're only, have about 102 of those part-time positions filled, which means about 50 vacant positions that we are considering hard to fill. You see the list of part-time staff positions and the numbers that are currently filled, ranging from community service leaders to recreation specialists. I want to make a note on that particular one, in the past, that position had been both part and full-time, however, currently, we're only filling it in a part-time capacity, something that we'll be recommending as a next step in terms of helping eliminate some of our part-time staffing challenges while providing sustainable staff positions to some of our key programs. And lastly, I wanted to mention both the lifeguards, the instructor guards, our aquatics programs, which is really a hard-to-fill position from the aspect of the training that's required to bring those people in at an entry level. And then finally, a community outreach worker is currently a part-time position at the senior center, and I think more and more in today's times, you know, looking at how we can expand a community outreach worker position at the senior center will be critical to us moving forward. A quick look at our budget, the top chart shows you the different funds that have contributed to the operation of our Parks and Community Services Department budget. As you can see, the top line, the general fund, we show you actuals from fiscal year 1920 and 2021. You see the decrease, that's mostly due to the pandemic and the positions that were cut in our department, can, cut and/or reassigned to other departments. In fiscal year 2021, you see there was some reliance on American Resting Plan funds as we supported, as the staff in this department supported the pandemic efforts. And when you look down below, that's the expense by category, you know, a great deal of our budget is in people, because I think what you learn, and if you've been to our programs or experienced what Parks and Recreation is all about, it's about the people, the staff that bring the programs, the events, and the services to the community, and having quality staff can really help us achieve our mission. We're going to talk a little about parks and operations. This first slide shows you, there's 30 separate parks in, in our city. The ones that are asterisked are ones that have onsite staff or programming. We do have some of these parks that are available for park permit regularly, but all of our parks are allowable for the community to rent for different activities, field permits, park reservations, or contract class locations, and even special events. Thirty is a lot of parks. A couple of our specialty park facilities, the Bark Park, definitely a well-loved amenity in our city. We have the Small Dark Park, the Half Acre, the Two and a Half Acre Large Dog Park. We want to thank our Public Works Department for recent renovations to small areas of the turf, including the Small Dog Park, and then a portion of the Log Dog, the Large Dog Park. The Costa Mesa Skate Park, a 15,000 square foot skate park currently. There is discussions, or we have received a funding allocation to expand the skate park, and we're starting that process, but as of now, includes the two bowls, boxes, stairs, and rails, and is definitely a well-used seven-day-a-week skate park. We also have two community gardens, one over on the west side, the Hamilton Gardens, and one on the east side, the Delmar Gardens. Those permits are issued annually and are pretty much always full. They do have wait lists, and staff are working on trying to eliminate some of those wait lists strategically through the community gardens. Fields, fields is a, is a, quite an endeavor in our department. We do oversee the permitting of 17 city operator maintained fields, and that includes parks and things like the Fairview Developmental Center fields, as well as 52 NMP, or Newport Mesa Unified School District sites. The staff that oversee the field permitting are responsible for implementing the Field Use Allocation Plan, or the FUOP, as we endearingly refer to it. Some of the, the major groups are the primary groups, the Group One users that use our fields, AYSO, both Regions 97 and 120, Acapulco Youth Rugby, California Soccer League, Costa Mesa Little League, Costa Mesa Pony, Newport Girls, Newport Mesa Girls softball, Newport Harbor Baseball Association, and Pop Warner Football. As mentioned, Fairview Park, our 208-acre nature park, is rich in biodiversity and protected in endangered species. There's five distinct ecosystems, including the vernal pools, the coastal sage scrub, grasslands, wetland ponds, and the riparian habitat. The master plan was recently approved for the update process, and while that's going on, we will be continuing our restoration activities of vernal pools five, six, and seven, as well as the Second Saturday Restoration Events in conjunction with the Fairview Park Alliance. We're also gearing up a project or two for Love Costa Mesa Day, which will be approaching in May. One important part is the approval of a conservation easement that will be coming before council in the next 90 days. This involves a portion of the wetlands that was a conservation easement or a mitigation project with OCTA. Staff will be bringing forward a presentation to council to talk about some of the conversations we've had with OCT over the, over the last two years, in trying to find a way to make sure that that conservation easement gets approved and move forward with some next steps or challenges that we'll be bringing forward at a later date. Fairview Park staff are also responsible for coordinating with a variety of stakeholder groups, including the Fairview Park Alliance, our Orange County Model Engineers, the Sea and Sage Pottery Barn Society, and the Harbor Soaring Society. There are multiple capital project efforts, some of those we'll reference later in the The community centers are, many of our facilities that are available for rental, they include the Valera Community Center, the Costa Mesa Senior Center, the Downtown Recreation Center, which includes the multipurpose room, the gymnasium, as well as the pool, the Downtown Aquatic Center, the Norma Herzog Community Center, in conjunction with the Lions Park Event Lawn. Our sports facilities include Jack Hammett Sports Complex, the Costa Mesa Tennis Center, the T-Winkle Athletic Complex. Staffing challenges for these particular, for the community centers involve the limited staffing we have available for evening and weekend permits and programs, which is the primary time that the public would like to use them or is requesting access to them. The Costa Mesa Tennis Center is currently in the RFP process with proposals due tomorrow. We hope to bring back an award of agreement in approximately 60 to 90 days. There are current capital improvements pending, which includes LED lighting for the, for all 12 courts, as well as court resurfacing. Long-term capital needs, we've discussed can be funded through site-based revenue, if possible. The Costa Mesa Country Club continues operation with Mesa Verde's partners through a lease agreement. Improvements for that capital improvement program include cart paths, bunkers, safety netting, as well as improvements to the bar and coffee shop or restaurant facilities. One of our other lease agreements is through the Boys and Girls Club, which is located at Jordan Park. They recently completed major renovations to the club back in 2019. Staff are continuing to work with them and hope to bring an annual report from the Boys and Girls Club to council, potentially before summer. Child's Pace is a state-licensed subsidized childcare center that's run out of our Downtown Recreation Center. It provides childcare for low-income families. We have a lease agreement with the Costa Mesa Historical Society for the building at Lions Park, and as you know, the Los Angeles Chargers have a lease agreement for the use of Jack Hammett Sports Complex. And finally, this slide is about animal services agreements. We have two agreements, one with the Newport Center Animal Hospital for animal care services, one with Priceless Pet Rescue for animal adoption services. Both agreements are set to expire in June of 2023 and are currently under evaluation. As terms of licensing in our animal services program, we've processed more than 3,000 animal licenses in 2022. In terms of impounds, there were roughly 600 impounded animals. About half were dogs, slightly under half were cats. There were also species represented like birds, reptiles, rodents, marsupials. As far as the outcomes, roughly 150 animals were returned to their owners, and over 300 adoptions were completed through Priceless Pet Rescue. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Monique Viasenior to talk to you about special events.
Good evening. So before you is a list of major special events that the city hosts. We do numerous free events that range in attendance anywhere from the, on the smaller end with 500 in attendance from the public, to upwards of 10,000 in attendance, and that could be at Snoopy House or Independence Day Festival. Some of these are new or redesigned to better engage the public. They all are very labor-intensive, with lots of staff involvement and planning. To make these hap, these events happen, we do pull staff from all of our programs and any staff that have availability and hours to make these events work. We don't have a dedicated event staff, so we find our staff anywhere that we can from all of our programs to bring these festivals and events to you. In addition to the city hosting their own special events, we also partner and co-host many other events. These include concerts in the park, the Fish Fry over at Lions Park, and on the Love Costa Mesa Day event. While not directly hosted by our department, these events, we are deeply involved in the planning and execution, which sometimes require advanced planning, months, and sometimes even a year in advance. With that, and, oh, no, we're going to keep going. So moving on to, we're going to talk about some program opportunities and challenges that we have in our recreation services. So getting started, this is a slide that shows our newly redesigned Spotlight Recreation Magazine. I'm not sure if you've seen the, the new design, but we really did a lot of research, and this was a lot of staff-involved work to bring forward something that not only represents recreation, but really is a resource guide for the city. So that way, it provides information, service activities, and also just phone numbers, and anything that you can really use as a guide to contact the city and help us be the, the go-to for resources. With that, I'm going to go ahead and pass it to Kevin Stoddard, our Recreation Supervisor.
Thank you, City Council. It's my pleasure to talk about the Aquatic Center for a minute. The Downtown Aquatic Center is in Lions Park, and it's the city's only pool. It offers year-round adult lap swimming, youth and adult swimming lessons, and aqua aerobics from three seasons throughout the year. It provides open swim and a week-long aqua camp during the summer, in addition to one to three special events in the past. And we also do a junior lifeguard preparation class for the Huntington Beach, Newport Beach lifeguard programs during the winter. Aquatic staff are exceptionally difficult to recruit. Currently, the Aquatic Center for the past several years has done swimming lessons maybe about 25% of capacity, what we would have been doing 10 years ago, because lifeguards are simply very difficult to find, it's a skill that's difficult to recruit, and it doesn't pay a whole lot in comparison to how, the level of responsibility that it retains. Next, we have the Costa Mesa Senior Center. It provides a host of a variety of enrichment and social activities that include play reading, current event and roundtable discussion groups, and bridge are just a couple examples. It also provides an array of essential services, which include congregate lunch program, which is free lunch Monday through, Monday through Thursday provided by OC Meals on Wheels. We also partner with Second Harvest Food Bank to do grocery distributions every other Friday. Transportation for medical appointments is also arranged anywhere in Orange County for free for qualifying seniors, and it's funded through OCTA and Hoke Hospital. We also offer general transportation within Costa Mesa, and all rides can be booked 40 hour, 48 hours in advance for all qualifying seniors. The Costa Mesa Senior Center also provides anywhere from 18 to 20 special events throughout the year that typically involve luncheons, and have attendance anywhere from 30 to 200 seniors. The Costa Mesa Senior Center also spiels, fields several special assignments. Most recently, we had a $200,000 meal gap funding program, in which the Costa Mesa Senior Center distributed $150,000 worth of grocery gift cards and shelf-stable meals to seniors in just a couple of months. Staff at this facility is rather limited. The availability of programming is diminished from the past. Currently, it's only open Monday through Friday from eight, it's 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. In the past, it's been open all the way through Saturday, and then on the evenings for special classes and rentals, which it can no longer provide to the, the community. With that, I will turn this over to my colleague, Ashley Thomas.
Good evening, Council. I have the opportunity to touch on a handful of programs. I will start with some youth and adult sports. Our youth and adult sports range, I'll specifically start with youth sports. They range from basketball, cheerleading, volleyball, and then we have the Happy Feet Running Club. All of those programs, like our events, are shared staff, so we utilize staff from our main programs, our ongoing annual programs, and we pull from them to, for staffing purposes for these programs. They typically all fill, majority of the divisions do have wait lists at this time. We've also, a common theme that you'll continue to hear me say as I go through these programs, we've really had to be creative with our solutions at this time. We've implemented creative ways to utilize fewer staff and still put on great programs. For instance, for basketball, it was always league-based, now it's clinic-based, where we could use the same staff throughout the entire clinic, do different divisions, and still fulfill the needs of the community at this time. So we're really trying to be creative, you're going to continue to hear me say that through the multiple programs that I go through today. Our adult sports programs, we do have an agreement with the Major League softball. Right now, they have over 90 teams, so it's a well-beloved program, or adult, I don't know if anyone's here, I think there's a couple of people on the, the dais that have maybe played, but yes, we love going out there, it's really beloved. Let's see, we have basketball, we have 10 teams at this time, it's really had a good, strong recovery from pre, let's see, 2019's, the pre-COVID times. So that's great to see. We also have pickleball, volleyball. Again, our challenges are limited staff, hard-to-fill positions, mainly just, but our main issue at this time is registration wait lists, and then obviously, we have the decreased program availability due to lack of staff. We also have our youth programs. Our youth programs range from ages three years old all the way up to 17 years old. We have our Early Childhood Program, our Mobile Recreation Program, our Rocks Program, Smart Camp, and teen programs. With that being said, again, we've been really creative in our solutions to continue to maintain these programs with very few staff. For instance, the Mobile Recreation Program still operates, but it's mainly focused on special events, bringing out special events. We get lots of requests from the community, whether it's internal events or external events, and we still provide that services as needed. We also have our Rocks After School Program. We also have our Rocks After School Program. Unfortunately, that program has really suffered, probably one of the most, programs that have suffered the most in the youth area. We're down to probably like a 35% capacity at this time. Actually have the specific numbers here. So this year, we're looking to serve probably close to like 500 to 600 children, max. In 1819, we served 1,622 students. So that one's definitely been impacted with the low staffing. We also reduced our sites from 11 to nine. We no longer serve Ray and Promona. Let's see. Summer program, we also, instead of doing many excursions that require lower ratios, more staffing, we are starting to bring different services onsite, different entertainment, guest speakers, entertainment onsite, instead of going offsite. Again, another solution that we've kind of come up with to still provide a good service to the community. The teen centers, we still have two teen centers. We had at one point, or 2019, we had three, so we're down to two teen centers. Our staff challenges at this time, again, these are hard-to-fill positions, decreasing program enrollment, especially in the Mobile Recreation, Rocks, Day Camps, and Teen Programs. And finally, our field ambassadors, and I think our beloved field ambassadors, I believe probably every single person on the dais and anyone in the community listening has probably interacted with one of our field ambassadors. They do a variety of responsibilities, everything from allocating, permitting, and monitoring city and Newport Mesa School District fields. They open and close gates, portable light units, they gas those things up, they move them around, assisting group users. Additionally, they support many special events, whether it's internal or external, and the city programs. Our challenges, again, are they're hard-to-fill positions. These positions are obviously very critical to the community's use to support fields, and then additional support in a variety of areas, including events and programs. I'll now turn it back over to Monique Villasenor.
Thank you, Kevin and Ashley. So just, you know, looking back at our programs and services, this is a very quick presentation and just a snapshot and glimpse of everything that we do in, in terms of programs and services, and I think we could spend probably hours or days on what we do specifically and the planning and the detail that goes into every single one of these programs and events, right? But I think it's a good snapshot of where we stand with operating with the shortfalls that we do, where, as Ashley had mentioned, that we have had to get very creative in how we can still offer services, whether that's in a limited capacity. We faced the shortfall of the pandemic, you know, with the layoffs and the reduced staffing. Reduced our staffing with, by 54 part-time employees. That's a huge cut into our programs. So just to get back to our pre-pandemic services, we would have to make some changes, and we see some opportunities here. We have a shortfall of roughly 50, 50 part-time employees if we want to get back to pre-pandemic levels. Part-time salaries, while they did come before council, they're still not competitive enough. An example would be, you know, Newport Mesa Unified offering after-school program as well, and they start anywhere from $20 and up to their part-time employees. So it's, it makes it very hard to compete for the same kind of services and the same kind of staff that we're looking for. Further increases would be necessary to hire and retain the staff necessary to complete our department's mission. I can give you one good example would be, you know, our adult basketball leagues. Just six months ago, we hired a senior leader who was really experienced. She redesigned our adult basketball league, grew it from one night to two nights, and now is leaving us after six months because she got a full-time job somewhere else paying, paying more. And we find ourselves in that constant situation to hire somebody, train them, get our programs going, and then they leave. And we have to keep doing this with our turnover in our part-time staff. We would also look at, you know, converting some of our former full-timers that have been decreased 10 years ago, they were full-time, they have since been reduced to part-time, so we would be looking at helping that turnover by offering more full-time roles, especially in the recreation specialist category, where they used to be full-time. We would also look at the conversion of possibly the community outreach worker that provides the social services that Kevin had mentioned, where we see it as a critical component of the senior center. So with that, I will hand it back over to Jason Minter.
Thank you very much, Kevin, Ashley, and Monique. Now, we're going to talk a little about master plans, or three critical master plans that are currently ongoing in our department. The first is the Fairview Park Master Plan. As I mentioned earlier, a professional services agreement with a consultant was approved just last week. We anticipate the master plan update process being completed in 2024. We have an arts and culture master plan that was completed and approved by the city in 2021. The year-one achievements or the highlights include the hiring of our arts specialists, Loret Garner, who's in the audience here tonight, as well as the creation of an arts commission that had their first meeting back in November. Currently, in year two, as included in the master plan, there will be an art crawl that's coming in March, and we have some free public art experiences that are planned for May and June or this coming summer. As far as the Parks and Open Space Master Plan, it is still currently under review. It's a master plan that started back in 2016 and was put on hold. We started the update process the beginning of last year and are trying to get that before the Parks and Community Services Commission in the next month or two. That way, we can get the, the study session done with the commission and get it brought back before the city council, before spring, or in spring. As I mentioned, arts, Arts and Culture Master Plan was, was, I think, a gigantic achievement for the city, being the city of the arts. Some of the things that there will be working on in terms of the, the commission is the arts grant program, updating the mission and guidelines, working on arts in public places, working on the free park performances that I mentioned earlier, as well as the, the highlight of the year, the Art Venture Program that's scheduled for September. We also have the Art Crawl that I mentioned on March 11th, which is a new arts event here in the city. Currently, there's six exhibit spaces that all feature local artists, if they're, they're on display now. We still have the utility box art program up and running with 17 new boxes completed this past year, and staff are working on an updated arts directory with over, currently over 100 artists from Orange County. As staff mentioned, staffing challenges apply to this as well, is trying to find accomplished part-time staff to support Loret and our other staff, and all of these events, activities that just need that routine day-to-day work completed. Now, we're going to talk about capital project management. Here are some of the, the highlights of the completed capital projects, including improvements to the Jack Hammett Sports Complex, which focused on accessibility, security lighting, as well as parking, and the addition of a storage building. Our, our partners in Public Works helped with the new playground equipment at both Tannerger Park and Jordan Park, as well as the installation of the two new pickleball courts at Tannerger Park, which I believe are, are very well-used. The replastering of the Downtown Aquatic Center pool did take the pool out of commission for about three months, but when they reopened right in the beginning of summer, it was well-received by the community and, and a sparkling, if I can say that, because that's what the water looked like, but a sparkling project that was completed. And then the opening of Lyons Park, including the Airplane Park Playground, as well as the Norma Herzog Community Center. Some of the grant-funded capital projects, just a couple of things to keep in mind, we do have a, a timeline on the grant funds that are being allocated through our three different partner agencies. Each project will include the following. It'll include a community outreach portion, as well as design, construction, inspection services, and then hopefully completion. The city will need to hire multiple consultants, project managers, to assist with these projects as we engage in each one of them. Here's a list of the, the grant-funded projects. It's separated by state-funded projects, courtesy of Senator Min's office, as well as Assembly District-funded projects, courtesy of Assemblywoman Petri Norris, and county-funded projects from Supervisor Foley's office. So as you can see, $10 million in funding, it is a, a blessing to have, and I think we're very fortunate to be able to, to receive funding like this, even though it means this, this long list of projects are all going to be starting pretty simultaneously. I think when we look at some of the, the easier projects to get started, staff have already received bids for the LED lighting upgrades, which includes Jack Hammett Sports Complex, T-Winkle Park lighting, and then lighting at the Costa Mesa's Tennis Center. So all ambitious projects and ones we hope to get started very soon. I would say we're in the pre-design process for most of them, which includes building the, the scope of services for the architectural design services for each of those projects.
Jason, can I stop you? Can you go back to that slide? And so if you look at the state-funded, you've got the four items there, okay? And I kind of, I remember, and I may be misremembering this, but there being some feedback from the community about, hey, what are we going to spend this money on? And then we said, oh, we're going to have a discussion with the community about what we spend the money on, and, and then now I see in this slide that there are these four specific projects. So, I mean, what is, and I'm sorry to interrupt, because I don't know how many more slides you have, but as long as it's on the screen. What's the story there? I mean, did we get the, these, the money for these specific projects, and that's always what it was going to go to? Or is there, is there still some wiggle room as to the allocation of the money we received from Senator Min?
Mayor, I'll respond to that since the city manager's office was the lead on that. And so the, these are the specific sites that the senator chose. The dollar amounts are rough, high-level estimates. In fact, for our purposes tonight, we can zero out the four lines above the $10 million, because really it's, this is all subject to kind of discussion, conversation with you, with the community about how much of the $10 million we can apply to the different projects. But it is for those specific four sites. We gave the senator probably, I'd say, $27 million worth of different programs, and we gave active transportation, we gave other park projects as well. These are the ones, these sites, these locations are the ones that resonated with the senator that he felt were consistent with, you know, his programming goals, and was able to achieve the state funding for it. The LED lighting upgrades, yes, that specifically was important to the senator because of the, you know, lower emissions aspect of it. Same thing with T-Winkle Park lighting, for, for certain, that is something that we will need to do that's consistent with what he was wanting to achieve there as well. For Fairview, specifically improvements to the Mesa was lined out, and then of course the renovation of Shalimar. So the dollar amounts that we have for the LED lighting upgrades, I think that's specific because that's literally how much it would cost for T-Winkle. I'm not sure if, what component of the 3.1 that we're estimating here is for the lighting, but those are the four sites that the senator selected, and specifically lighting upgrades for sure at T-Winkle and Jack Hammett. The rest of it really is up for council consideration discussion, along with the community. I don't know if anybody else has anything else to add in terms of specificity, Raja or Jason or Alma, if you remember anything else from those discussions.
One quick follow-up question. So when do you anticipate that we're going to have that discussion and what's going to be the nature of that? And about how, how we're going to allocate and spend the Dave Min money within these four properties?
So what we're anticipating is, first, we had to have the conversation with the State Department of Parks, which happened, I believe, in December, right before we went on, on break, just to make sure that we were on the same page with the Parks Department at the state level and making sure that we understood, you know, what the process is going to be for the projects. So we had to have that conversation. Now, I think we're at the point where we can agenda is having another study session that's just on this body of projects. The other ones that are further below are very specific, and those funded by Supervisor Foley and then Cadi Petri Norris, those are specific to those sites. But further discussion can be had on the $10 million either on a Tuesday night and probably, I would say, maybe the March timeframe. I think we can put together some information about, based on our analysis of the CIP, things that the city council has mentioned, wanting to have at these different facilities. I know at T-Winkle, we've talked at times about it, like an amphitheater, things like that. And then also for Fairview, I think we have about probably $30 million worth of restoration work that at some point it would be great for us to do. And so we'll bring you the full suite of different projects that you've mentioned, different estimates over time that, that our Public Works Department has collected for different projects at these different sites, to come up with some options and some, you know, intelligent parameters for you to discuss what you think based on what we've heard in the past, but then also for you to inform as to whether any of those things that we've talked about in the past are still viable, or if you have completely different views on these specific projects. Of course, making sure that we're consistent with the senator's goals, and we'll make sure we bring that information as well. So, specific to the sites, specific to the lighting in these particular areas, but otherwise open for discussion, but probably less than the full suite of what we'd want to do at all of these sites, all in, so we'll have to prioritize which projects we want.
So council, as long as we're on this subject, does anybody wish to make any comments? Andrea? Andrea?
Thank you.
Put us on discussion mode. That's fine. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would like to-
Oh, sorry. Now you've got to do it.
Okay. I would like to do a study session specifically on the Senator Min money, because I think what's important is to put these projects also in the context of the CIP, so the existing capital planning that we've done. So in some cases, we've already allocated funds several years ago for improvements, and in some cases, I know it's things that we planned on putting in the CIP this year or, or in coming years. And so putting the T-Winkle Park projects, for example, in the context of all of the other things we've talked about, from tennis center upgrades, which at this point I'm very confused about whether they're funded or not, or whether they made it into a budget or not, as well as other smaller projects that I've talked about, like signage at T-Winkle to let people know where the amphitheater even is, for example. So, I mean, I think that there's the context of the existing capital planning, the understanding of which things are long lead, like all the lighting projects, for example, we should be submitting now for incentive applications with Edison to make sure that we like, that's a nine-month process just right now for incentive applications, for example, right? So some of it we should probably get in ASAP, other things we should have a community meeting on, but it's really difficult to talk about without the context of what's already been in our capital plan.
Excellent comments.
Agreed, council member. That was our intent for the March meeting, is to bring the CIP, so we could have that conversation when we have that full conversation about the CIP. So that's the next, after, tonight, it'll be Development Services next month, then the CIP in March, and we can carve out a specific portion of that presentation just to talk about these specific sites, what's been in the five to seven-year CIP in the past, do we still want that, do you want something else, and how it all fits in together.
That, that's fine, but I'd like to, Raja, to tell us if there's something that's a really long lead item that we need to like execute before March. I don't want to wait and miss the chance of getting it done in 36 months. So I think there's probably a little bit of discretion there.
I think the LED lighting, for sure, we know that we must do that, and we can start that process and start submitting for reimbursement with the state as soon as possible.
Good idea. Jeff?
Just on this topic of the, the Min money, we'll call it that. I agree, we need to have a, a study session on, and a few items that I want to make sure that we do discuss is what are the restrictions or limitations with each of these particular projects? For example, we talk about a deadline, but is there potential to extend that deadline? What would we need to do? Can we use some of the funding for not just consultants to do design work, but also project management, maybe on a contractual basis? I think the theme I'm hearing here is our capacity, and so if there's a way that we can farm that out and do it effectively, especially with the, you know, large amount of projects that we have, I, I think we want to look at that on a programmatic level. And then I think that's pretty much it on this piece, and I'll, I'll save my comments as we go through the rest of the slides.
Manuel?
Thank you, John. We're saying our first names here. Anytime we talk about revisiting, I always have to make, make, make the point, just to protect the investments we're getting in District Four. I'm happy to revisit any of these items, but I will hope we don't touch the money for Shalimar Park, especially considering how we don't have any park funding going through due to lack of development. This might be the only chance we get to really give this community a chance to reimagine and re-envision and re-own their, their park space. That being said, I do concur with Andrea and Jeff that it would be smart to look at all the options available to us. It's not often we get $10 million from the state of California, and these tend to be one-time things. So I think it's wise to look at all the options. So I think it's wise to look at all the options available.
Harless?
Thank you. Just a couple of clarifying questions. Laurianne, you talked about the, you know, what we're looking on the screen in terms of dollar amounts. My understanding is for the state-funded $10 million, the $900,000 allocated for LED lighting is sort of locked in. That was a defined project that we need to get started on, but that the rest, the dollar amounts in these different buckets can shift, but that those funds need to be spent at these particular locations. Am I understanding that right?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And then one thing I've, I've been a little bit unsure about, because in some of these locations, in all of these locations, we, we have funded improvements. And I think there is some thought in the community that, that, oh, great, if, you know, we, we funded a million dollars towards a project, but now we've got a million dollars from here, does that free up the million dollars that we already funded? My understanding is, is this funding from the state is supposed to be additive and not displacing previously funded projects. Can you just clarify that? Are we, does, does receiving $10 million from the state free up $10 million we had already allocated? Or if not, what is, what do we need to do with that money?
So we did not have, as you know, anything close to 10 million already allocated in our budget for, for these projects. And so this is, this is largess, if you will, that's come our way from the state, which we're really thankful for the senator for, because this is, I think, probably the biggest amount of funding that I've ever seen come from the state for cities in Orange County in the past couple of years. And so this is phenomenal. We do have funding in the CIP that we had put in previously for Shalimar, for Ketchum-Liebold. It would be our recommendation at this time to keep that, because the, it's, a million dollars may sound like a lot of funding, but it all depends on the scope of the project and how large you want to make it. And we know that we have some opportunities with the right-of-way on Victoria, especially as it relates to Ketchum-Liebold and being able to create something really unique and special there. And so the understanding, I think, with the senator was not that this would replace funding that the city has, but it would help to supplement that we get some really good park assets and community projects going in, specifically in these areas. And so I would consider it additive. But again, the amounts are flexible within that 10 million.
Thank you. And just to clarify, I agree with sort of that being a recommendation, or that as a recommendation, but is that a recommendation or is that a requirement?
I don't believe that it's a requirement. In general, the state does not like for there to be supplantation. Being that this is coming from a different source of funding, we haven't had specific conversations about that. Alma, I don't know if that came up during your call, but I'm assuming it's going to be additive, that it's not a requirement at this moment, because it's not coming through a Parks Department grant. It's coming more from the state allocation budget process and the budget bills, which is a different process. Through a park grant, absolutely no supplantation. But I'm taking it as that same requirement, if you will, just from the standpoint of typically the state will want you to enhance above and beyond what you are already going to do. But is it a, is it a specific requirement, hard line? I'm not, I'm not aware of that. That hasn't been communicated. Could it come in a future transmittal letter or requirement? When they look at our reimbursement, it could. So I would, on the conservative side, I would treat it as additive, just to be on the safe side.
Okay. Thank you.
While we're talking about these projects, I did want to respond to council member Harland's comments to the mention, to the point of deadlines. We did have that conversation yesterday with Towns and Public Affairs, our lobbyist. They mentioned how oftentimes cities will get grant funding, and because they're really starting some of these projects from scratch, just not having had a lot of funding for them previously, it's not uncommon to have to request for an extension. They would work with us on that. We're hoping to not require or need an extension, but given the extent of funding that we have and the projects, we may need to do that. He's not known there to be an instance where, you know, the deadlines weren't extended, except that the state is going through some financial difficulties. And so I think to the extent that we can get the projects going, start spending that money, seeking reimbursement, it's probably better than not. But there is an opportunity for deadlines extensions, according to our lobbyists.
Lauren?
Thank you. So I had a couple of things. When we're talking about the upgrades, the state-funded for, say, T-Winkle Park lighting and other improvements, I was just curious what the other improvements were, if that's detailed somewhere. And additionally, we had talked a while ago about doing some upgrades to the banquet center and the restaurant at the golf course. And I was wondering if there were funds available for that. We had talked about that several times in the past.
I can take this, or Raja can clarify, but to my knowledge, what we have for the golf course specifically is in the general fund portion of the CIP budget. These are the grants, and I believe it was some money for design initially.
That's correct.
Yeah. And so that's what we have right now for the golf course facility.
And with respect to other improvements at T-Winkle Park, we talked about a few other improvements, and these include, we had a discussion about amphitheater improvements. We had improvements to the tennis center, as well as, as well as the lakes. We are currently in the design for the lakes, and that's a big project that needs to be funded at some point.
You know what you should add to the list, too, is the fields, the base, the baseball field, it's got a drainage issue. And I mean, I'm sure that they've been suffering with the most recent rains. It's not really in season, but if something like this happened, rains that we had recently in season, they would be wiped out for a couple of weeks, they couldn't play. So, and that's just some feedback that we got at opening day last year. So that, that's, that's another thing to keep an eye on and put on the list.
Sure.
Right. That's exactly, exactly what I was getting at when it said T-Winkle Park. I was wondering if that included the baseball fields at T-Winkle Park at the complex, the sports complex, so if we're talking about the other side, like where the lake is and stuff, because the baseball fields there have some needs as well. And I didn't know if any of these funds were going to be going towards that. Like John had mentioned, we have drainage issues. There's, there's a few other things that aren't issues, but there are some things that we definitely want to look at. And if we could allocate funds towards that, that would be very beneficial, not only for youth sports, but for the adult sports to a batting cage and stuff like that, things that we had talked about.
Yeah, the lighting upgrades are definitely part of that, but we can look into the drainage, too.
Thank you.
Don, do you have anything?
No, I, I think I understand how it works. I appreciate it, though, John.
All right. Sure. No problem. And if you need to, if you have something you want to say, just, you know, say my name and we'll call on you. So anyhow, I think we broke your flow where you, why don't you go back? Meanwhile, you were, you were in the middle of a PowerPoint, so please resume, counselor.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the notes on the chart, it, it only showed the grant-funded projects. There are other projects that are up for consideration, including the money that was set aside for some design for Brentwood Park. I know that's something that we're going to be, have community meetings coming up. So there are other projects, but this slide was more focused on the more recent grant-funded projects from the three wonderful agencies that have allocated those funds for us. Moving forward, we'll talk about commissions, committees, and partnerships. We have two commissions that our department serves as liaisons to. One of them is the Parks and Community Services Commission. They serve as an advisory body for matters related to facilities, parks, and programs. They meet on a monthly basis. As you can see, they, they did host a discussion a little over a year ago to talk about pickleball at, at Tannerger Park and helped us with an art contest that we had in July. And then the Arts Commission, which was established in 2022, as I mentioned earlier in November, was our first meeting as an advisory body to the council on all matters related to arts programming. And we talked quite a bit about arts previously with the master plan. Our committees, we have three. The first is the Animal Services Committee. They meet every other month. Currently, they've been reviewing the animal care and adoption services agreements, as well as exploring possible beekeeping ordinance and a possible traps by neuter release program. The Historic Preservation Committee meets monthly. Currently, they host the 50 and Still Program. We've been in discussions with them about the renewal of their lease and some upcoming projects together. The Fairview Start, the Fairview Park Steering Committee, they meet every other month. They've recently reviewed the RFP scope for the master plan update, and they're eagerly awaiting updates for what potential projects could be at Fairview Park, as we mentioned some of the previous grant funds. Our department wouldn't do what we do if it wasn't for a lot of the partnerships. One of them is with Newport Mesa Unified School District. We do have the joint use agreement for use of their fields, which is a huge benefit to not just the city, but to all of the nonprofit sports organizations, many of which I, I mentioned earlier. Costa Mesa United, the nonprofit youth sports organization. We do attend their monthly meetings, where we get a lot of feedback from each of the youth sports organizations. We talk about grant projects and collaborations, which is a great partnership for the city to have. The Costa Mesa Foundation, with which we have the ongoing collaboration with the concerts in the park. And then Save Our Youth Center, we have a memorandum of understanding with SOI, where we provide funding for school transportation. And then currently, we've been reimbursing them for part-time employees and best transportation. This also could be seen as a staffing challenge. The original MOU talked about us providing staff members for SOI as opposed to just reimbursing them for their staff. So as we build our staffing levels, that could be where we revert to the, the previous way that MOU was written. And I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about a couple of other valuable partnerships. I've mentioned the Public Works Department earlier. You know, we wouldn't be Parks if we didn't have the, the collaboration with them on, on the maintenance aspect, as well as the capital projects, whether it be management or day-to-day operations with, you know, adding picnic tables or the, the memorial tree and bench programs, you know, working with Raja and his team and Rob and Danny and their staff that support our special events like Snoopy House. You know, we couldn't do what we did without our Public Works Department. In terms of partnerships, I, I do want to mention also that our, our department, we do share, and you will find a lot of, of rec leaders, community service leaders that have moved on from our department to other departments here in the city. I think we're a great training program, and you will find there are rec leaders or community service leaders scattered throughout the city, including the city manager's office, you know, to name one department for sure. But I do want to thank Public Works. I do want to thank our, our police department, the park ranger programs that patrol our parks. You know, that is a critical service that wouldn't allow the public to enjoy our parks without, for them. So that is, is the conclusion of the presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Laurianne for some closing remarks. And myself, Monique, Ashley, Kevin, and even Lorette, if we need to pull her up, are available for questions if you have them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason. So hopefully, council, this provided a good overview, high level of the, the Parks Department's, you know, programs, services, operations, all the relationships that they manage, the lease agreements, but also the special projects that they're working on. And so I think for a department that's been struggling to get fully staffed, they're doing quite the stellar job. We will be bringing forward to you some items to sort of help with this staffing shortage that the department faces. And so you'll be seeing a request in the mid-year to address some of those staffing challenges in a way that we believe is affordable. And so we'll be bringing forward yet another salary range increase for the part-timers. And we're finding that, so last time that we brought something to you, it was to, I think our salary ranges for many of the positions topped out at minimum wage. And so what we did is we just created a new salary schedule where the first step was minimum wage. That's still not working. There are a lot of young people who just won't work for $15 an hour anymore. And so we'll probably, and we have 50 vacancies. I know for one, I have three teenagers, and they won't work for less than $20. And they can find a job at Chipotle, Target, anywhere, McDonald's, for $20. And so we'll probably have to bring this salary schedule closer to the market and start at, you know, $19 or $20 to make it more competitive and to be able to fill these positions, especially leading into the summer. And so as a mid-year adjustment, we'll be asking you to please approve that. And we believe that that will then generate additional staffing. Carol and I met yesterday. We're going to take a crack at doing this without increasing funding in the department's budget, because we did restore funding. We just can't get people, because the salary schedule is too low. And so we'll take a crack at year one, bringing forward a salary schedule that starts at the $19, $20 range for all the classifications that serve this department. Hopefully, we can get some lifeguards. We need to make sure that our youth are safe as they use our facilities. And then hopefully, we can fill those positions. At this time, we don't think that it will necessitate increasing the department's budget. They have the funding. It's just our salary schedule. When we recruit, people look at that, and it's just not yielding enough applicants. And then we'll also do a big blitz in terms of, they, they've came, they came up with this really neat recruitment plan and strategy that would ensue, and hopefully, we can get positions filled for the summer, so we can get back to the full complement of services that we had previous, you know, to the pandemic. And then we'll also bring forward in March the CIP discussion, the conversation around these special projects. And we have the master plans as well that you're very familiar with. So I think in short, there's also some positions that were previously full-time, probably before the Great Recession. Some of those positions were then converted to part-time, and it's a revolving door. I think we can correct some of those positions on a piecemeal basis in a way that's really affordable and combine a couple of part-time positions into some full-time positions. And I think we can actually keep people, and so that we're not a training ground where it's a constant cycling in and out, and have some stability, get some institutional knowledge, and actually improve our program. So I think we can make some of these changes in a way that's really affordable, not with a ton of additional funding, just restructuring things a bit. And so we'll probably bring that forward to you. But in closing, before we get additional feedback from you, just wanted to thank the council for sitting through what I know was a long presentation. We worked very closely to try to make it concise, but really meaningful. I think for any Parks Department, trying to get seven projects, new projects off the ground with state funding, along with Public Works, would be extremely ambitious, in addition to implementing three master plans and working through that, in addition to the day-to-day staffing shortages and putting on these great special events. And so just something to keep in mind as we move forward, this, this department has, you know, quite a book of business here that needs to get done in the next three years, especially so that we don't have to return funding in case we can't get extensions and deadlines on those state grants. And so with that, that concludes our presentation, and I am eager to hear your, your feedback.
I think we're eager to give it. Lauren, you're up first.
Okay. Thank you. So I just, I just want to take a few minutes. I do realize that this was an extensive presentation and a lot of work and thought went into it. I just want to say, Monique, Ashley, Kevin, Jason, you guys did a great job. I appreciate what you guys did. I know that you guys are creating programs from scratch. I know that's very difficult to do. I know you're addressing a lot of community feedback and what the community would like to see. So I just want to say that I appreciate what you're doing. I can see what everybody is doing. And moving forward, if I can be a positive influence in any way, I want you guys to reach out, because I want to be helpful in this process. So thank you very, very much. It's greatly appreciated.
All right. That's a really good way to start it off. Great job, Lauren. So, so why don't we, why don't we do this? Let's, let's all just take our time. We can, anybody can come and they, they could say, give their suggestions, whatever comments they have or whatever questions, and then we'll go through everybody once. But if you want to then, if you, if something occurs to you, you want to do seconds, we'll do that in no particular order. So who wants to go first? Andrea, you can go.
Yeah, I'll go first. Okay. So let's say that I want to start the Costa Mesa Sci-Fi Nerd Club, and I want to go book a room somewhere in the city to do that. How would I go about booking a room?
So a variety of ways. You can call our front desk, City Hall, you could stop by the NHCC. Victoria is our new facility rental coordinator. She has been our coordinator for about, I think, four or five months now. And so she's getting the NHCC up and running. And from there, we're going to be evaluating, but it starts with her, and she fills, helps you fill out a rental application and walks you through the whole process from beginning to end.
Okay. I don't think I'd heard Norma Herzog have reviewed an NHCC yet, so, okay. I'll start, I'll start, like, you know, saying that out loud. Okay. And then, you know, what, what is the rate if I want to book the NHCC for an hour?
I don't have the rates off the top of my head, but they all fall into different categories, whether you're a nonprofit, you're a commercial entity, you're a resident, you're a non-resident. So all, we have divisions of, and different price levels for each rental facility. And those were taken directly from when we converted the old communities, the neighborhood communities. community center, and we took those and we applied them to our Norma Hertzog.
Okay, so we haven't changed the rates in a couple of years? Okay. And then, so what is the likelihood that I'm going to be able to book a room? Because I've heard that there's a lot of folks who want to use our community rooms, and that we've actually got fewer of them now.
So we were taking a waitlist the whole time we were closed, so we're working our way through that waitlist. If she has availability on somebody's day that's brand new, and hasn't, somebody hasn't already inquired about a date, we book up to a year in advance. And so it all just depends on the date that's being inquired. Right now, she's focusing on the Norma Hertzog Center because of the staffing situation. It's just her and one other staff right now. So as we hopefully address some of these staffing challenges, we can present the option of the Belerick Community Center, or, you know, the Senior Center, or additional facilities that we have, but we just don't have the staff for it.
So right now, we're only booking Norma Hertzog?
Correct.
Okay. What about the Adams Room at the library?
There actually, we're booking a few rooms. So the Belerick, I think it's the Sierra Room, the Belerick Community Center is open for rental, the library is open for rental on the evenings when the library is not using it. And the gym is technically open for rental. It's just when there's availability currently, it's booked with City Programming, Monday through Friday.
Got it. What about the facilities of the golf course?
Those are booked directly to the golf course.
Got it. So are we giving preferential pricing and scheduling for Costa Mesa residents for all of the facilities we control?
There's nonprofit rates included in the fee schedule for that, but we do not give priority to Costa Mesa residents in that schedule.
Okay. And then in terms of the bookings at the golf course, do we know if they're giving preferential treatment to Costa Mesa residents, Costa Mesa students, nonprofits?
In terms of rentals, I don't, I don't know. I can follow up with our golf course operator and get back to you.
Okay. Switching gears for a second, so when is, this is probably Raj's question. Have we ever done just a pure facility condition assessment of all of our facilities in Parks?
We have walked all the parks at one point. I mean, it's been a while since, since I did that, but that's something that we intend to do. We want to go through and do a comprehensive facilities master plan.
Yeah. Because it just strikes me, we're, I mean, I love the mid-money, don't get me wrong, right? I love getting $10 million. But I also, before we go embark on lots of, like, new things, it's important to upkeep the things that we have. And, you know, for years, I heard about the pool being in disrepair, and we finally, finally got the funds, and then we finally did it. And I don't want to get to the point where we're, like, picking slivers out of kids' toes to figure out that we need to replace something. So I'm, I'd like to prior, even if it costs us money, I'd like to figure out how we prioritize, at least getting an understanding of what the facilities and the need repair are before we get too excited about spending lots of new money.
Yes.
Okay. Concerts in the park at Fairview. Are we going to keep doing that?
Right now, there are no plans to not continue the concert schedule as it's been happening for the last few years. So we won't expand it, but it would be limited to the Tuesdays in July, as it's been for the last few years.
Okay.
Now, possibly during the open space master plan, or the, sorry, the Fairview Park master plan update process, you know, if, if some of that, the feedback from the community changes that, then that can be a direction we bring back for Council at a later date.
Well, I'll just provide my feedback from the Council, that I don't think we should be doing concerts there if we're saying it's a passive nature park. And I feel like we've got very conflicting thoughts and feelings about what we're doing at Fairview right now, and, you know, us adding a couple of events during the summer where thousands of people show up and kind of trample around is not in keeping with some of the other policies, like, not letting Eddie B fly there. So it doesn't quite all square in my mind how we're treating Fairview. And given the fact that OCC has literally offered to host concerts multiple times, I'm not sure if that's something we've explored. Raj, we've talked about benches and picnic tables at North Park a couple of times. I don't know if that's something we can squeeze in somewhere, but some picnic tables probably are less than $10 million, I'm hoping. Okay. I saw that the animal care and adoption agreements were listed as something the Animal Services Committee is discussing. My understanding is those all expire in June of this year, is that right? Okay. So if we were to start taking another look at how, parts of scopes of work that we might modify prior to, ideally, prior to the expiration of those contracts, so we could put a new RFP on the street, I'm thinking we probably need to start that process now, is that right?
Yes, we've already started the evaluation process, requesting information from both vendors that we work with. And then as well as getting input from our animal control officers and our own staff. There are extensions available on the current agreements for both, if we would need them. But the goal would be to, through this evaluation procedure, launch an RFP soon, if that was the determination.
Yeah, I'm actually interested in potentially doing an RFI before we do the RFP, just given that seems like so many cities are operating slightly different models in terms of who they contract with, how much of it is full service, what they decide to do in-house. And so I would be interested in learning more about what other cities are doing, or what other providers might offer as part of their services, rather than sort of waiting to the point where we're in extremis and have to do an extension because there's nothing else. So I'd like to take another look at it, given some of the concerns that I've heard recently. Is there a reason why we stopped doing the Rocks Program at Ray and Pomona?
Lack of participation. Those were our lowest numbers.
Really?
It would take multiple, yes, they have a large presence from their school district after-school program, and therefore, it was mostly just kindergarten children that participated in our Rocks Program.
Oh, so we were competing against the school district in the after-school program?
Correct, and they have a free program there.
Oh, okay.
Kids Connect.
That makes sense. Okay, thank you. What's the schedule for the skate park expansion work? Anybody? I don't know if that's a Raj's question or Jason's question.
We have staff are working with Raj's team to put together a scope to, you know, look for, well, to start the RFP process for designers to get a design contract in place.
Okay. And when do we expect to have a design contract in place?
In the next three to six months.
Okay, thank you. What are the next steps on the fly field?
So based on Council's direction that we received previously and our conversations with some of the environmental agencies, we had a walkthrough over at the park, and we met with, and I know that Jason's also met with Matt and HSS to look at some different opportunities. And so we thought there is, on the east side, an opportunity to relocate there that we thought would be viable. However, that's not, I think, what HSS would like to see ideally. And so you requested at the last meeting that we bring it back. I think we can bring it back in February, so we can have that conversation on the floor, talk about some additional information that we've learned since the time that we made that original presentation to you, as it relates to the vernal pools and some of our agreements there for mitigation, and also just the activities that need to happen there and the ecosystem and habitat concerns that we have with continuing the fly field there, which is why we were recommending, based on the feedback on the floor, about considering other locations, really looking at the east side. And so we can bring that back to you, you know, show you the sites that we were looking at, and really go through the feedback that we've been getting from the regulatory agencies on the vernal pools in particular, because I think that's the biggest issue and the entire habitat and ecosystem that basically is aligned with that. So hopefully, I didn't botch that up too much. I don't know all of the environmentally appropriate terms, but we want to bring all of that information at once. I think some of the information that we received after the fact might influence your decisions on this, but I think there could be a viable path forward for HSS, but I think from a staff standpoint, it's, it'll, it's a challenge to continue where they are, for sure, given some of the environmental considerations.
Okay.
So we can bring it back in February.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great. Yeah. I'm almost done, Mr. Mayor.
John.
John. How long is the waitlist for Community Gardens right now?
We're currently going through the waitlist and contacting each of the people in a way is to ensure that they're still interested, so that it's something that we haven't done in a bit. We're also trying to explore the potential to add raised beds for people with, you know, that have limited accessibility. Officially, the waitlist for Delmar is 85, for Hamilton, it's 32. But we do feel like some of those people may have been on the list for a while and may have either moved out of the city, or might not be interested, or found alternatives. But we're, we currently are having staff reach out to all of our, our waitlist people for that.
Do, do we have any plans to automate any of these reservation systems or waitlist systems? This seems like a very manual and tedious process.
We have a way to contact them, like electronically.
So we have their emails? Is that, is that? Sounds complex.
We're definitely, organizationally, in a bit of the dark ages, technologically speaking. And so we're working on the different implementations, one by one, in terms of software. But yes, ideally, it would be fantastic to have that. We don't really have that currently, but it would be great to, to have that at some point. And so my guess is, Steve, you can nod from the audience, is it in the Information Technology Strategic Plan in there somewhere, along with all the other software?
Yes, actually, we do have some, some funds in our ITSP plan for reservation, so we can work with Jason Minter if we want to go down that road and replace that software.
Okay, thank you.
I think as soon as we get done with the land management system implementation, which is taking up a good amount of staff time across departments, across, obviously, development services, Public Works, Fire, Finance, IT, obviously. Once we get through that implementation, and the next one is the financial software system, some of these smaller ones, we might be able to shake loose, since LMS is such a huge project that crosses over so many different departments. But so will the finance ERP, and so we'll take another look at the ITSP and see if there's any way that we can do some of these smaller softwares as well as we go. But it's in, it's funded, it's in a plan, it's just getting there after this major implementation of LMS.
We just completed the renewal process. Sometimes during the renewal process, people fall off, and we are able to fill from the waitlist, so those numbers were for December.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll check back on that.
I'd also like to highlight with the Community Gardens, prior to 2019, the average was about 15 to like 25, depending on the garden. We did see a spike through COVID, and as we continue to go through the waitlist, we see a lot of people say, I no longer have the time or the availability to work on a parcel. We've also seen some vacate the parcel due to lack of availability. So this number is, it will decrease, and especially as we reach out to update our waitlist.
Way less bread has been baked since COVID is over, yes. And then, last question here, so when did we start doing Spring Fest? Is that a new thing?
Just last year.
Okay. And was that, like, a thing that the community wanted or Council wanted, or is that, what was the origin of Spring Fest?
So previously, we would partner just with different events, or people, or agencies around the city to host little events around the city at different parks. And when we evaluate, we saw the need for these seasonal events that most cities conduct that we weren't doing. And so finding a way to bring one larger spring event, as in a seasonal event, to the community is what we found best, and so we made that work. During the pandemic, I think we did some kind of picture egg hunt. That was a virtual, you know, social media campaign, so we converted that into something in person.
Yeah. Spring Fest is fine, nothing against Spring Fest. I, I just want to make sure that we're not, like, we're not actually shooting ourselves in the foot, and then also struggling with staffing, right? I mean, to my knowledge, that wasn't something as a council member, I was like, you know what, we really need a spring activity. You know, I know that Fourth of July kind of came about that way, all credit to John. But, but I just want to make sure that we're not, I'm not clamoring for more events, right? I, like, we have lots of, we do so many things between Barktoberfest and, we have, we do a lot. And so to the extent that we're talking about our challenges with, with staffing and with how much we have to do, I want to make sure that we're not also creating more work for ourselves. And, you know, same thing on automating the reservation system, right? Like, the idea that we probably need a full-time person to be taking all these reservations, how could we be working smarter and not harder? And then on the facilities condition assessment, it's sort of the same idea, right? If we have a 10-year list of, here's all the things that are broken, and we are working our way down that list, the idea is that you've got to do less full replacements, because you've kind of kept an eye on things over time. And so, you know, I very much recognize that in 2018, when I was elected, there was a lot of broken stuff. And we've kind of just spent two years until the pandemic fixing broken stuff, and it never really felt like I got to do a lot of the things that I wanted to do as a council member, because we were, that was important, that's still important. The land management system, the IT thing, some of the really just broken stuff at City Hall, frankly, structurally and culturally, that we focused on over the last couple of years are very important. And so I, I just want us to maybe get back into that mode. I, if we never created another event in the next four years, I am fine with that, right? That is, that is okay. I want us to fix the broken things. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Who wants to go next? Manuel?
Thank you, John. Again, still weird. First of all, I want to thank Andrea for mentioning the Rocks Program at Ray and Pomona. I too was shocked that it was removed, but then I remembered that the state, the district does a lot of funding for those schools that are kind of at risk and have more kids that need at the school activities as their parents are working. And I think my comments should be really taken in that frame of mind of, like, idle hands on the devil's playwork, right? Or workshop. Because a lot of things in my district that's happening are happening because our teens and children do not have activities to keep themselves entertained. By that, what I'm saying is, I'm seeing increasing tagging, I'm seeing increase in little kids trying to become, like, gang members. And that, I think, for me, is an important frame of mindset to have when talking about today's Parks and Community Services, like, review. So first things first, I just want to reiterate, market dictates, and if we find ourselves to be out of line with the market, then these entry-level jobs are not going to be filled. I remember being in college, and my only requirement for a job was not if I liked it, it was what paid me the most. And a lot of the people we cater towards, towards our Park and Rec jobs, are those folks entering the workplace market, might be a part-time student, might be a part-time worker who's going to school. I think we should be adapting to the market and making sure that we're paying the staff appropriately, because what I'm seeing today, and the, and what I heard today from, from you presenters, is an urgency in that you have ideas, you have plans, they're good plans, but we don't have the, the staff to do those plans. And I think it's important for us to recognize that the city of Costa Mesa is a service industry. We serve the residents of Costa Mesa, so we need to make sure that we're adapting to the environment we're in, we're paying our employees appropriately, so we have more employees to do more work. So along that vein, I'm also in favor of, of having more part-time employees than we full-time employees. If that's a tool we need to do to get people in services, then let's do it. So with that being said, I'm gonna just begin with a few things that are dear to me and dear to people in my district. So first is, do we have a timeline for the Ketchum Leibl and the Shalamar Park community meetings? I, I know Leibl had, had it ready, but just for the public's awareness.
Yeah, the community meetings we had prior were to qualify for a grant application that unfortunately, we did not receive. So yes, we will be, we're finishing up the scope of work for a landscape architect contract to come in, and once they're engaged, we would reestablish the community meetings with the landscape architect onboard. I hope, or Raj, two to three months, we should be at that place.
Yeah, we should have a contract in place at that time, and then we'll schedule the meetings.
Okay, so like, so basically, these, from now until like March, April, we're trying to find a contractor, or a person to do the facilitating, and then from then, we'll plan the meetings.
Yes.
So residents should be on the lookout for the, like, the spring, summer months. Okay, perfect. One thing I noticed on the, on the staff report, you, we combined the Ketchum Leibl Park expansion with the Victoria Street Corridor, and then in the presentation, it only had Ketchum Leibl Park. Where are we with the Victoria Corridor? Is that something that's in the CIP? Is that something that we're starting to be funding for? Just general update.
I'd like to consider them somewhat joint projects, as, you know, we do want to try to create a cohesive look as you head down Victoria, either direction. The priority, however, will be Ketchum Leibl, because The priority, however, will be Ketchum Leibl because of the grant funding. But if there is any other planning that we can kind of do a two-for-one or do a phased approach with a landscape architect contract where we focus on Ketchum Leibl, but we don't want things implemented at Ketchum Leibl that we wouldn't want to see, you know, kind of spread out down Victoria. You know, that's the, the plan right now, but with the emphasis on Ketchum Leibl, not the rest of the corridor.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Now I'm going on to, I'm calling them open space issues, or open space areas of opportunity in that light, sorry. I know in the past, I've talked a lot about, you know, trees and planting trees in areas that don't have them. There's a lot of benefits to it in terms of not only shade, but just as a community and just quite frankly, as primaries or councils said, it's like Guinness, it slows cars down. One thing I didn't notice was, we didn't have any tree things on this presentation. Are we actively pursuing planting more trees in Costa Mesa or is that something separate from parks?
The Parks Commission does a little bit of oversight of it, but it is a public works effect, so I'll turn it over to Raja.
Okay.
Yes, the tree planting is under public, public works. And we are working with, with our public affairs manager to, to come up with a form that will be online where residents can request trees. And meanwhile, we are also looking actively at planting trees. And for example, we walked the Presencia corridor and we, we planted many trees already, but we identified 40 trees that, that could be planted on that corridor. And, and we'll be continuing to look at opportunities as we do other projects.
Okay. I'm happy that we're, we're being proactive now and we're trying to find areas that need more, more trees. So I really appreciate you for doing that, Raja, in your department. One thing I'll note too is that, you know, we do have an arborist now in the Parks Commission. So I think anytime we can to lean on our resources available will be great because, you know, maybe they have access to more trees than we can get ourselves. So just something to put a no. Second thing on the, the green space portion of my comments, Luke Davis Field. So I know it's been talked, talked about a couple of times, usually during the pandemic when we're in need of open space. But the reality still stands that in District Four and Five in the south part of Costa Mesa, there's not a lot of green space. And we have this green field, Davis, Davis Field, that's always kind of closed up because of a current contract and lease we have with, with the, the baseball league. So my question is really two-part, but the first part is, do you know when that lease is gonna expire?
I, I don't have that, that lease.
Or that agreement?
It's, it's not a lease agreement as much as they have a contractual agreement with the landscaper, but I don't think that is holding up the process.
Okay. Because one thing I, I see with, with that, an opportunity really, is I remember when I was growing up, I lived behind In-N-Out, so it was, that, that space was like a block away. My mom and I would walk laps around there every, every Saturday morning for our little workouts, right? I remember seeing other moms in the community using that space recreationally, and then at one point it just stopped. So I'm not sure if, well, first of all, I don't want to see us lose that partnership with that little league or that baseball league. I think it's important to have those opportunities. But what I do want to see and see us doing moving forward is when we do have these contractual agreements with, with leagues to use a facility that we own, that we still carve out spaces for our residents to use it as well. Because, you know, in my district particularly, like, we don't have a lot of green space. So when you see a field closed up, it kind of hurts, like, why, why don't I belong there? Why can't I use that space? So just moving forward, as we look at these agreements, as we renew them, let's try to cover our space for residents to also have access to them as well. And alongside that point, this was more for Lori Ann. I know I've been harping this for four years and the pandemic came through, but where are we with working with the district to open up Ray and Pomona? Because as you know, every other school but those two schools in West Costa Mesa are open.
Lori Ann, I, we have had, we do a monthly meeting with New Part Mesa District officials, and we have had conversations with them. And right now we are working on what it would take to make sure we could do that and offer it with hopefully little to no issues or costs to either. But if there are costs, we want to identify those going in and bring those back to both the council and the board before we do so. But we are engaged in conversations monthly with the district on that request from council.
Do, do we get a sense from the district, what has been, in your, in your opinion, and maybe it's not probably doing in a public forum, but like, do you see movement in that regard? Because it has been four years.
Since it was requested, yeah, I, I believe there's been movement. And we are trying to pick at least one site to establish as, as more of a pilot. And if we can establish that site, you know, continue to look at other sites. Some of the things we just want to keep in mind, you know, there, we do have a, an agreement with the district right now when we permit Ray School for Sports permits, that the district and the city do split security costs for when the, the groups are there. So there is a cost to, to that agreement just for use of Ray. And there would likely be other, whether it's security or other costs, that, that the school district would want to keep in mind just to make sure that the school resources were protected, the classrooms and everything that's in there. So they're looking for the one that might work best as a pilot that we can then, you know, adopt to other school sites as well.
That, that's awesome to hear, like, have, have those dialogues and have that, that progress.
It's also about the conversations about what the public would want access to. Is it just the green spaces? Is there just the playground? Is it the blacktops as well? And, and try to see if that changes what the agreement would be.
Makes sense. And I think, again, anytime we do these kind of things, it'd be good to have a community meeting if, if possible. I know it's hard sometimes with staff, resources, obviously. But I, I'll tell you one thing, I know when I went to Saver Youth, it was next to the former Boys and Girls Club, next to the, the theater, next to Ray. And I remember, despite not being open to the public, people were still using that space. And people were predominantly using the back, the blacktop, the basketball courts. So what that tells me is that in my lifetime, and quite frankly, in like, in like 10 years, because I was, I was in SOI at 17, I'm not 27, we had a space that wasn't really open but was still utilized, be completely closed off. So that to me is very important as we look at the lack of green space.
And council member, I'll fill in just a little bit more too, just to put things in, in perspective. I think when the conversation is initiated, when I first came on, we had a different superintendent, and then there was also a, someone who was performing in the acting position and didn't really feel comfortable making drastic changes like that. I think in the new superintendent in West, and he's only been here a year, I believe, he's, he's extraordinary. And he believes, I mean, he really truly believes in the whole child philosophy. You know, what happens at school is important, but what happens in the community when a child goes back home in their neighborhood is really important. And so from the very first conversation that I had with him, it was the first thing I mentioned to him and he embraced it. He's also had some staffing changes as well, I think just to kind of align his staffing in different roles, but also, and also the individuals to make sure that there's alignment in this philosophy too. And so I think that we're in a place now where these discussions can really take off. And so I think it's going well. Hopefully we'll have something soon, but it took a little bit to get here. We need, we needed a partner, quite honestly, with that same vision, that same belief. And I think we have that in West.
And, and thank you for, for sharing that, Lori Ann, because I think, and what I want to note when I ask these questions, I know I'm asking them pretty directly, but it's because my residents are the ones that are asking me, like, why are we doing this progress? So I, I appreciate that in-depthness, that you're right, sometimes it does take the right partners to get things going. So I do appreciate that, Lori Ann. Last, last group of questions before I start praising you guys, you're being amazing. So downtown rec center, I, I'm just generally curious because the way I look at the rec center as a youth grandma Costa Mesa, 19th Street's always been kind of that natural border between, between resources because one, it's the line between Estancia versus Sistine Harbor, it's also a pretty busy street, and a lot of the, the schools that feed into those high schools don't really have a lot of collaboration. So I'm kind of curious, how, how well utilized in terms of like actual teen membership do we have in the teen center? And what's it been historically? Just to get a kind of picture of how big that program is in the downtown rec center.
I know we, in the last month, we walked the facility, you know, focused on the teen center for a while, you know, teen enrollments or teen participation was low and it became kind of a multipurpose type room. We talked about trying to rededicate more resources to upgrading it, to bring in, you know, more equipment or activities that the, that the teens would want to do so that we could really reestablish that teen center at the DRC. And then once we get it to a place where we, you know, we're more, you know, more comfortable with, you know, doing kind of a, some publicity on it. But yes, we want to encourage all teens in, in the area to come, and we really want to hear their feedback about what amenities they would want to see in the teen center. So, you know, we do welcome, welcome that feedback because we do want to make some changes, reorganize the way the room is laid out, maybe get some new furniture in there. But along the way is really focused on programming, obviously the staffing challenges that we've been issued. You know, the teen centers often live or die with the staff that, that work there. And, you know, and I say that not because I got my start in teen programs, but that was one of my, my favorite jobs early on as a part-time, I was running a teen center. Ours was focused on high school students, but, you know, whether it was me or the, the director of the teen center that transitioned after I left, they each bring something unique to the table and, and they each have a way to, to bond with the, the local teens. And I think that's what's, what's really critical is making sure we have the right specialists in place to run teen programs. I think we have really good ones right now. We really want to update our facilities so that we can build our teen program back up, specifically at the DRC.
A couple of things you said that I, I enjoy. One is just the fact that you understand how, how important it is to have like longevity in staff and how, how much staff really dictates a teen's success. I did youth ministry when I was in, when I was in college, and I'll tell you when, like, and you know this, I know I'm speaking out to the public, like, the thing that is the most in these teen programs is that consistency of a teen knowing there's someone they can talk to that is there every, every day in and out. So I appreciate that you're sharing that. I also appreciate how you mentioned that your way into, to do the publicity. That's actually my next question, because I see a big, like, need and a vacancy of like, I'll call it quality, a quality home entertainment in a lot of the, the south part of my district, south of 19th Street. I see a lot of, a lot of teens that don't have a place to go. And I think this could be a part of that, of that solution. So obviously I know that staffing is a big part of that, that, that difficulty, but I'm happy to know that, that the foundation you're mentioning is there. And I think that's where I'm gonna pivot from the questions, just thanking you guys. Because first and foremost, it's, it's always the Parks Department that's out in the community, out of the community events. It's, it's your staff that's the ambassadors to Costa Mesa, they're putting a smile and doing things amazingly. And I just want to say, like, I've never had one complaint from any member of your team when I've been out in the community. And quite frankly, I have leaned on them a lot, not only just on my events, but like events with, if they're fully or just, I'm out in the community. Your department's been through and through the heart line of Costa Mesa. I know you guys have gone through a lot this, this few years of the pandemic. I know you guys were hit hard with having to let go, let go employees. Some of them were my friends from high school. Like, it was hard. It was sad for them because they loved the city and they loved the department. But I know as we're looking at the opportunities ahead, we have a good foundation and a good team. And I think if we can address these core issues, like making sure we have the adequate staffing, adequate pay for our staff, I mean, I know the team culture will thrive with that. So thank you for the tough questions. Thank you for being honest with, with me and the public. And more importantly, just thank you for being amazing and being our ambassadors to Costa Mesa. So thanks.
Just, just want to find out on the teen programs, it's not just the teen center, it's use of the DRC, use of the Aquatic Center, and our partnership with SOI. I think that's something, working with, with, you know, Mary and her team, like, we really want to build that partnership and have the staff in place, not only that we can support SOI and their programs, but have the teen programs at our own facility that can do collaborations. Because I've heard about some of the wonderful programs that have happened in the past, you know, basketball or use of the gym. And yes, we do want to return to those, kind of those pre-pandemic levels, but do it at the right time. And, you know, 20 years ago, if you'd asked me about video games, is that Parks and Rec, I would have said no. But if you're running a teen center and you don't have quality video games, yeah, you're, you're not going to have many kids. So times change, right? Thank you, sir.
Does anybody else want to go now? Arliss, would you like to go?
Yeah, I'll, tried to put my comments in a logical order. I'm not sure that that's gonna happen now. But I, I'll just build on that last point. I think this, we often sort of shorten the department name to the Parks Department, right? But it's Parks Arts and Community Services. And those are such essential services to our community. And we've learned, you know, a lot of scientific research has supported that, but we've really learned that going through COVID, like how important it is to have public spaces, indoor and outdoor public spaces where people can gather programs for, from early childhood through our senior community, the need to facilitate opportunities for neighbors to meet each other and to socialize is all, it's not just for fun. Like, it's an essential part of building safe and healthy communities. So I, I fully support the need for, you know, adjustments to, to staff the department and probably kind of make some people fall off their chairs. But like, I don't think, I, I think the program of, of work that you shared is, is impressive. I don't think this department does enough. I don't think this apartment is big enough for the city of Costa Mesa. And I understand we're not going to fix that in, in a year. We have to sort of get up to, to baseline first, but this, I just want to, you know, very strongly go on the record that, that our part, our Parks Arts and Community Services should be bigger and broader. And I'll, I'll touch on that in a few of my comments. I don't even know where to start. I'll, I'll start where Andrea started. I had the, the question about, you know, the, the facilities that we do offer, the indoor public spaces and outdoor public spaces that we do offer. I think we are, and again, understand that there's a lot of sort of historical reasons that we have outdated technology and so on, but, but we need to get to a place where, you know, we've built these resources, we manage these resources, we spend money to keep them looking nice. They need to be available for our community. I've, I've tried, you know, as a council member to reserve some things and it's gotten better, but I, I just think it's nuts that, you know, we have to email someone and wait a few days for a response and, and even having a full-time person to, to make sure that's responsive. It's just, it's just sort of too slow and I think doesn't, doesn't make those resources available in the way our community needs them. I, I'd like us to get to a point where anyone can go online, see the whole variety or the whole menu of indoor and outdoor reservable spaces that exist in the city or, or just free open spaces. We should be able to, to look at those spaces, you should be able to see, you know, are they available on the dates I'm, I'm looking at, right? An online calendar, and we should be able to reserve right there. The, the fees for that should be transparent. I, I really like the idea of preferential or reduced fees for Costa Mesa residents. These are resources that we already have and we just need to make them, we need to close the gap on accessibility. So that's one. Okay. I'll go through maybe a few questions that came up in the, in the presentation. So I thought I saw a note that said the Fish Fry would be at a new location in 2023. Can someone clarify that?
Yes. Kevin was, is our lead on that, but we'd been working with the Lions Club, I mean, prior to the Fish Fry moving back to Lions Park. And there was a little bit of space constraint. I know they shared that with council, you know, the meeting right after the, the Fish Fry last year. So we'd worked with them so that they will have the opportunity to use the outfield of Luke Davis. It will require that they shift their, their dates a couple of weeks back into June, but we walked it with them on a couple of different occasions. They have their new date set and, you know, secured their, their carnival vendor, but they are going to be using kind of the, the backyard area right next to the DRC. And then there are gates that open up to Luke Davis Field. So they would be shifting everything onto those two parcels and not use the event lawn during that weekend. So it's a much bigger area. I, I think I speak for them when I say they're excited about having the more space, the accessibility. You know, there's still plenty left to do design-wise, but yeah, that's something that we wanted to lock in place back in December, and we're moving forward with them with just a later date in June.
Okay, great. Let's, yeah.
But still a Lions Park.
Shifted location or something.
But still a Lions Park.
You scared me for a minute.
Sorry.
And, and I've just heard such positive feedback with the, the Fish Fry beam sort of back in that location. I know there are a lot of concerns about, you know, is there going to be enough parking? I saw so many people, it, it was well-attended, people were excited to sort of have that historical element of, you know, back in its original home. And I really think it actually made it a lot more accessible for people who could walk over. So thank you for shifting the location, not moving it.
Yes, shifting, thank you to Kevin for all of his work and thanks to the Lions Club because they were open to it and there was, you know, just a lot of conversations that were had, but one of the bigger concerns being not enough room for the rides. So they will be able to expand the number of rides, which I know they're excited about.
Yeah. And a great example of the partnerships, right, with our nonprofits, the Fish Fry, the Historical Society and so on, and many groups who host booths. One of, I'll just add, one of, I think I've said this before, one of my favorite things about the Fish Fry is that it's always been so like hometowny. I don't know if that's the word, right? Like, the booths are not some, I'm just thinking of a name. It's not like Chick-fil-A, right? It's like the Estancia baseball team frying hot dogs, right? I think that's really nice. Sorry, Chick-fil-A, you guys are great. But I think that's a really important aspect of that particular event. You listed programs at the DRC. I know, I've played pickup soccer there before. What, is that no longer on the list?
That's correct. There's no more foots all offered anymore. Attendance just kind of fell off. It was really lagging behind all the other sports. And we've picked up another night of youth programming, three seasons out of the year. The gym gets a lot more use with that gone.
Okay, that's interesting. That brings me to a note I wrote and I was going to mention later. But I really want to emphasize when we're evaluating events, evaluating programs, that we don't equate lack of participation with lack of interest or lack of need, right? And a lot of times, you know, people may not show up to something, not because they don't care, but because they weren't aware, right? Or they did come and they don't feel welcome. So let's just make sure that we're not immediately sort of equating people not showing up to not being interested. I'm not suggesting that you just were, it just sort of triggered that thought. I would go, but it's always on Tuesday nights, so I couldn't go. Cancelled a meeting once and I went and I had a blast. Next time I miss a meeting, you'll know where I am. You mentioned, I think, when you were talking about the Historic Preservation Committee, you mentioned a lease. I'm assuming that's with the Historical Society at the facility on the Lions Park campus. Can you expand on that a little bit? When is their lease up and sort of what, is it just a lease for the space?
Yes, they have a lease for the use of the building at Lions Park. And it is the Historical Society, sorry, not the committee. I believe it has an automatic renewal, but it's, you know, it was something that they brought up in discussions with us about future. They have some improvements that they'd like to make inside in terms of shelving and trying to make the more use of the space that they have inside and look for storage opportunities for things to try to make room for other displays in their building. So yes, we're working with them on that.
And what is the timeline for that?
Ongoing. I think they're working with a designer on a layout. And so, you know, we met with them, I think, in December, Kevin and I. And, you know, we were trying to go through their agreement and just make sure we understood how it got to where it was. But everything is positive and moving forward. Again, looking for additional storage opportunities somewhere around the park. It could be some sort of a container or something. And I think that would help free up them to make the changes inside that they wanted. But they're still doing design on that and wanted to make sure the city was committed to them long-term.
What is the timing of the, like, when does their lease end and what is the time of the lease renewal?
I believe it just renewed for a year.
Yeah, it finished its first, I believe it was a five-year term and it has five one-year terms after that.
So we're in the first plus one?
Yes.
Okay, okay. That may be an opportunity. I think it's such a fascinating space. If you haven't been there, a quick shout out to the Historical Society. Such, just sort of, it's a museum of Costa Mesa. Really, really interesting. All volunteer-run, quick PSA, I know they're looking for volunteers anywhere from one hour a week to many hours. But one of the, I think, limitations is, I think they're only open a few days a week and during working hours. So on times when I've wanted to go outside working hours, I haven't been there. So that may be another opportunity to have space that's programmable through, you know, an expanded partnership. And I'd be interested in pursuing that. I'll talk to them about that directly, but just wanted to put that on your radar as well. You know, another public building, another opportunity to create public space in a really interesting environment. Okay, can you describe the art crawl? That's coming up pretty quick and I wasn't aware of that.
Want to speak to that or do you want me to have Lorette come up? We'll call Lorette up. Our art specialist, Lorette Garner.
Okay, is this on? Yeah, so this will be kind of a pilot, a new art crawl experience because Costa Mesa doesn't really have kind of a typical downtown space like other cities. And so kind of reinvented this experience a little bit. It'll be a kind of shuttle experience where we shuttle people to three different spots in Costa Mesa. And so March will be honoring Women's History Month. And so what we're doing is we're visiting two women local artists in their studio spaces. And then we'll end up at the Orange County Museum of Art to see their 13-women exhibit and also get a behind-the-scenes tour. So we're really excited about that. So it will be a smaller group of people and we're kind of testing it out to see how that, this model works.
Okay, interesting, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Well, while we're on the topic, I'd love to brainstorm with you. When I lived in Arlington, Arlington, Massachusetts for a few years, we had, there was the Jamaica Plain, Open Studios, Arlington Open Studios, really interesting events that I think there's a lot of interest in and a lot of opportunity in. And as we make our streets safer for walking and biking, we can facilitate those types of events going forward. Okay, just want to add my, I held back from interrupting, so I wanted to add my sort of here, here to the phased approach or some kind of combined approach for Ketchum Label and the Victoria Corridor, making sure that that's, we're sort of thinking about how to do that expanded opportunity without slowing down that project. I think adding and expanding park access in neighborhoods that don't have it will be my number one priority across all of these things. So I wanted to add that. Here, here to tree planting. This is not just beautification. Again, so much support for trees and improving health and safety in neighborhoods. Here, here to Luke Davis Field. I think it's just wrong to see fences around fields, especially publicly-owned fields. There's Luke Davis and then there's that space between Luke Davis and the DRC. I've been talking a lot with our Newport Mesa reps on this. I do think that this is the time to lean in, given the superintendent and the current board. And it's the easiest way, sort of adding to that, talking about increasing access or using school-owned fields is the easiest way for us to increase access to park space in the city. So I really hope we can lean into that. And I'll keep pushing as much as I can from my end. You asked, you mentioned, Mr. Minter, about some of the facilities. One of the things I heard a lot of interest in was using basketball courts, for example, at Whittier. So I think there's more than just sort of the open play fields. I think it is some of the facilities. And hey, it's a lot cheaper, I think, to, you know, provide access to those basketball courts than to try to find space to build more. That was the first page, okay. We didn't talk much, we haven't talked, I think, yet about the Senior Center. And this is something that's becoming sort of more near and dear to my heart as we've seen how COVID really wreaked havoc on more isolated seniors. I think we have a great program at the Senior Center. I know we have the Meals on Wheels program. Kevin, you're leaning in, is this your department? Okay, I know we have the Meals on Wheels program that was doing outreach. I remember some discussion about a waitlist for Meals on Wheels and then reduced funding or sort of losing funding so that we were rolling back our outbound Meals on Wheels services. So I have a question on that, but then also just broader. What services do we provide to seniors who can't come to the Senior Center?
So I'll address the reduced funding thing. During COVID, the Senior Center stopped the Congregate Meal program and it turned into a drop-off model. And this whole thing is run by OC Meals on Wheels. Staff really just provide logistical support on the day of. As kind of things opened back up, the funding for the distribution model that OC Meals on Wheels did was more expensive and they started to wind it down and set a limit on it. At one point, this was the, I think, the second-largest distribution point in the county in early 2020. So they began to wind down and they started a waiting list based on attendance. And this is when they were planning the transition to Congregate.
And Congregate, is meals served within the Senior Center?
Yeah, and we switched back to that service on December 3rd. That one does have a limit, I believe about 40 or 50. They can scale it up depending on what the consistent need is. To my knowledge, they haven't exceeded that capacity to date. And then as far as delivering meals to seniors in need, OC Meals on Wheels also does meal delivery through volunteers. Our community outreach worker at one point did assist with the intake and evaluation for them. There is a lengthy, not a lengthy process, but a very thorough evaluation process because you have to qualify for it. And they, it varies, but they typically have 40 to 50 people on that list at any point. And they break them down into Priority One and Priority Two. Everyone on the current waitlist for that is Priority Two. Meaning that it's based on, I can't talk to the specific details, but they may or may not be homebound. They just may, they lack access to transportation. During COVID, the Senior Center started its own meal transportation program where we were actually getting meals from Meals on Wheels. And our staff that have commercial driver's licenses were actually taking our vans and doing routes all throughout the city. And during this time, we were surveying the participants of that if they really needed it because we did not have the stringent process that OC Meals on Wheels did. And what we found is that most of them were continuing it out of convenience. And it was 2021 when we opened up the Senior Center to the general public. Very few people that were on it really needed it, based on our surveys. And that's when we just phased out the program and started doing general transportation for seniors through California Yellow Cab as opposed to paying for meal transportation.
Using California Yellow Cab?
So the funds that were used for California Yellow Cab were the same funds that were used for meal transportation. So as we opened the Senior Center back up, more seniors were using that service as opposed to meal delivery. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think I followed and I think I heard you sharing that there's maybe some seniors who were using the meal delivery service don't necessarily need it. Those seniors might be fine. Like, I know the need is there, right? There are seniors that are not maybe even aware of the Senior Center services. The need is there, right?
So we actually got the contact information from OC Meals on Wheels for the people on that waiting list.
Yeah.
And we contacted them through our community outreach worker just to find out, does anyone need transportation? If so, we can arrange Senior Center membership. And we have the free Senior Transportation Program to come to the Senior Center for Congregate Meals. We also are beginning to stock up 100 frozen meals at any given point. And we are also attempting to purchase, because we have a lot of excess M2 funding for transportation, to purchase an ADA-accessible van that any of our staff can drive as opposed to a commercial driver. So if we need to deliver meals or if anyone comes to the Senior Center in an emergency, not during the allocated times, we have some meal assistance. And again, the community outreach worker works on people on a case-by-case basis to address their specific needs.
Okay, and what other, other than meals, what other outreach services or outside of the Senior Center services do we offer for seniors?
The community outreach worker, that is a social worker. It's currently a part-time position that we would like to make full-time. But she does one-on-one therapeutic counseling by appointment. She will work with people on a case-by-case basis to help with insurance, scheduling medical appointments. It's really whatever they kind of need. She holds veteran support groups, a transition support group.
Does she go, does she go outside of the Senior Center or do people need to come?
No, currently she's in the Senior Center.
Okay, and is that just a time constraint?
She's part-time, which is a big concern. That's why I want to make it full-time. It's a very busy position. But currently, we have no plans to send her elsewhere.
I also want to chime in that our staff do, when they can, do wellness calls to the seniors on a list that we have. They'll outreach, you know, just check in with them, see how they're doing. So we do have, we do many phone calls for wellness checks, so.
Okay, okay. So we're inviting people to the Senior Center and calling people. But we don't have sort of senior-focused programs that are going out to our community.
We've done outreach in the past through, for instance, for COVID. We've actually sent staff all through the community, probably within a mile and a half radius, and flyered the programs. We've done it for multiple, I think, council outreach programs or events that we've done there. So we've definitely walked the neighborhood and made a lot of noise that the Senior Center is there. But we don't actually send people door-to-door offering any kind of services.
Okay, okay. One of the things that I've gotten some feedback on is that there would be interest in, and I'm not suggesting this as a program, just sort of an idea that raised to me a potential need, is like, wouldn't it be great if there was sort of like a senior rec van, you know, comparable to the mobile rec van that's sort of youth-focused, right? Going out into communities, really trying to identify seniors who might be more isolated. Still meeting a lot of folks who aren't aware of the services at the Senior Center, who then, many, you know, when they become aware, use it, right? But then others mention that there's this access gap. So I think the transportation is great. But then there's others who just, you know, really, really need some support within the community. So I think there's some opportunity there. And I know that the sort of trellis neighboring team is starting to focus on this area. They're a great community partner. So also fully support the community outreach worker going full-time. There's definitely a need there. On the topic of shuttles and transportation, there is a grant opportunity that I've been made aware of for a point-to-point shuttle service that in other cities, they've used to particularly target the senior community and provide shuttle services, not necessarily just from their home to a city location, but from their home to other places in the city. That's a grant opportunity that I know, I think the city manager had a meeting on this morning. $1.5 million for, as I understand, a program that's operated sort of outside of staff. So I'm really interested in looking into that program opportunity. And it sounds like we even have maybe excess funding for that. Okay, that was seniors, okay. So we talked a little bit about collaboration with schools. The, as our city manager mentioned, the schools are moving to the sort of community schools model. I don't know if, I don't think I saw that on the agenda for the liaison meeting. But in our, whether that's the right venue or in our other discussions, I think now is the time to really discuss where we can collaborate with the schools, especially as they're leaning into this community schools approach, where they want to make their facilities available for our community. Our programs shouldn't be competing. Like, it was, you know, I guess I'm glad we stopped one program because it wasn't being intended because people are going to another. But I think those are opportunities to sort of augment, you know, I'd love to see more coordination so that there's, you know, instead of each side maybe cutting back programs to provide sort of the same level of service to our community, are there opportunities to sort of leverage and double the services and events and opportunities for our community? So now is the time, I think, really to lean in on that relationship. Another collaboration partner, I saw in our list when we talk about partners, a lot of the ones, I think historically, have been the sports partners. I think the Soy partnership is great, of course, supported that. I think we've worked with the Melinda Hoag Smith Center. I think that's another partnership we should really lean into, really focus on the health services. They've got a whole nonprofit wing, a consortium of like 30 nonprofits or something with funding specifically to support a lot of the neighborhoods in our community. So, and they run a lot of fantastic programs that our community members would be interested in and eligible for. So if a partnership is even just sort of sharing awareness about those programs, that'd be great. And they've got, you know, wonderful funding sources to help augment some of our stuff. Okay. And I, again, I fully appreciate that we don't have the staff to sort of keep up with what we've been doing historically. I think as we rebuild that staff, I really want us to be thinking of who's, still who's not accessing our resources? Who's not showing up? Who's not aware? Who's, I don't know how much we track who is participating in different programs and who's not participating in different programs. But I want to make sure that we have a really intentional approach to reaching out to the communities who are not participating in our programs. Because in all of my conversations, it's a very small percentage that's just like, just not interested, even after they know. It's they weren't aware, they went and they didn't feel welcome, they couldn't afford it. It didn't, it wasn't, you know, kind of convenient with their schedule. And so I want us to sort of evolve the programs too, to make sure that we're really covering a broad spectrum of our community. I think most people who do come to events love it, right? But there's still a lot of our community who's missing from those. Okay, I'm almost done. I mentioned a primary priority of mine is equitable park access. So, and I think Councilmember Chavez mentioned this too, right? We really don't want to lose sight as we, as we've, you know, got all of this funding to support existing resources, right? Millions of dollars for existing sports complexes, millions of dollars for, you know, necessary improvements at Fairview Park. I don't want to keep pushing back the effort to bring more equitable access to parks, right? We still have neighborhoods that don't have access to parks and we need to close that gap. So I liked Councilmember Mars' sort of suggestion. I think this is how I interpreted it, sort of really understanding the ongoing maintenance budgets for the assets that we have now. But I really want to be careful that we don't say, well, all of our money is just getting spent to maintain those assets and we never get to building the assets so that every Costa Mesa resident can walk to a park or has a neighborhood park. So again, that goes back to my earlier comment about like, maybe we need a bigger department in budget. We really need to close those gaps. We started off really strong in 2018, you know, with the funding for Shalimar and the We started off really strong in 2018, you know, with the funding for Chalamar and the funding for Ketchum Leibl. We have a specific task in the open space master plan to identify which neighborhoods don't have access to parks. We, we, we can't continue to let that linger, so I'll be asking that in the open space master plan, and that's, that'll be where my priorities lie in terms of, you know, the funding beyond what we have to spend in, you know, in, in two years and three years. For events, this will be a little bit counter, I think, to Monique, what you shared. I'm, the feedback I get from the community, again, people love our events. I think people would love if there was an event every weekend. I don't think we should have an event every weekend. I'm not going to ask for that. But I, I would like to see an effort to, to make sure that we're doing things, again, in, in different neighborhoods. So, you know, you talked about sort of Spring Fest being the sort of consolidation of local events into one large event. I'm hearing a lot of interest for much lower-key local events, right? And this sort of goes back to creating spaces and programs that bring communities together. So, opportunities for, I think, the Movies in the Park, I think, are relatively low-key events. Something as simple as just like a food truck night, right? Like, on this night in this neighborhood, there's going to be a food truck. And that doesn't even need to be staff-organized, right? So, so, I'm interested in that. I think, I think having more events in local neighborhoods will make communities stronger by bringing people together and helping introduce people in their own neighborhood. And that might be a way to, to sort of augment this, this gap for neighborhoods that don't have parks existing, that don't already have places to gather. I think we can also sort of streamline and facilitate and even encourage, maybe through a small grant program, other people putting on those events, right? So, we have this special events process that I know has discouraged people, just because there's a, a whole lot of paperwork and a long lead time, and it's very expensive. So, I'm really interested in, in looking for ways to actually facilitate and encourage and make it easier for, whether it's a business, or a nonprofit, or even a resident, to host small-scale events that are very localized in different neighborhoods. And I think that's a place where we can really leverage, some of those ideas for smaller events is a place where we can leverage our different, even our commissioners, for example, in, in coming up with those ideas and really getting into the community and finding out what, what ideas different communities might have that would bring neighbors out. Okay. And then, last thing, on the, on the same vein, I think Councilmember Mar mentioned this, too. Not every, not every event needs to be huge, right? I'd rather have sort of more smaller events that, again, don't even need to be staff-run. Not every project needs to be huge. We've had, you know, input on just small, small improvements, benches, picnic tables. We've had some, some interest in frisbee golf equipment at different parks. These are really small projects that sort of add some spark of interest and create things for peoples to do at our parks. So, maybe that's more of a Raja thing, but it, it covers the parks and making our parks sort of more interesting. Okay? Thank you.
Jeff? Yes? You know what? I'll tell you what. Do, do, do you, did the presenters need a break? Or can you push forward? Anybody, let's put it this way, anybody can leave at any time. You should leave. Everybody can leave, but you can't leave, because you're, you know what? If you want to leave, Jeff, you can leave. I'll go. I can, I can do my thing anytime. I'm a utility player. We'll go to Dawn in the sky. Whatever you want to do. You want to go?
Three minutes.
Take, yeah, everybody, go, go ahead, go ahead. You guys can pinch-hit for each other. Ashley, do whatever.
All right.
Jeff?
I have one index card, so.
You've got one index card? All right.
That's all we need. So, first, I should say, I've always been a bit jealous of the Park and Community Services Department. You, you guys bring joy to people's lives every day. It's an enviable job. I can assure you, being an attorney doesn't have that same level of daily satisfaction. John and Kim may disagree, but I doubt it. But I, I, seriously, I think that that's part of what draws you to doing the work, and it shows. We are very fortunate to have an excellent staff. You guys are experts in programming. We heard all about that earlier, so I don't want to belabor those points. What I will say on programming relative to projects, is we may need to reprioritize this year. I think the balance has shifted to having all this grant funding, as well as other CIPs. It's going to be hard to balance what we have typically done, and I concur with, with Andrea's comments about, if we didn't have any more special events or other types of programs, I think we would be okay for a short period of time. I don't hear people clamoring for a Spring Fest in my district as well, but on projects, I want to talk about projects and plans. So, projects, I think it would be helpful for the council, and even for the commission, to have an, a spreadsheet matrix, whatever you want to call it, that identifies the CIP projects, their sources of funding, the locations, the council district, a little brief description, and then the schedule and timing, so we can just kind of keep track of this, because the, the slide you presented tonight with, you know, seven projects and $14.5 million, I think is really good. But we could, we can expand on that and have it to be a, a regular thing for us to consider. On plans, you've noted, we've got Fairview Park Master Plan, which we've just approved, Cultural Arts Master Plan, which has been approved and, and being implemented, and then Open Space and Recreation Master Plan. So, Jason, I think you said the status of that was to bring it back to Parks Commission in March, thereabout?
Yes, to get it on the schedule for a study session with the, the Parks Commission.
Okay. I may suggest that we do that as a joint study session, and, and the reason for that is I want to be able to look at that prior to us doing any more budgeting. I really think that we need to have a, a really good handle on, especially the CIP portion. I know this is kind of like a preliminary review of, of our department operations, as well as budget, but I've been looking at it strictly from a, a budgetary perspective. And I believe that the Open Space and Parks Master Plan, which is in process for a long time, should really do at least two things. One is guide the decision-making for staff as well as for the council. So, by that, I mean, it should have policies that help us when we have issues of maintenance or management. It should have some specific goals. I know you've listed a number of them tonight. I would respectfully say they're not all goals, but I think that they kind of get at larger goals, and maybe it's better to operate with a handful rather than dozens. And then, secondly, the, the master plan should establish at least a preliminary or primary CIP priorities. That was quite an alliteration. Because this is going to be a constant issue for us. What, what are we going to devote our resources and our, to specific projects, and where is it going to be? And I'd really like us, and this is not just for parks, this is citywide, for us to be really using our master plans, that they become tools that are part of the, if not daily, maybe weekly or monthly consideration by our staff and council, so that they are, you know, we pay all this money to consultants to put them together, we get community input, let's, let's use them as intended. The, the point of a plan is not to have the plan, it's to implement, and I think we really need to be focusing on that. I am almost certain, John is going to have some comments on the golf course, that I may want to augment, but I, that's it. Three minutes?
Thanks. Dawn, do you want to, you want your shot?
He's no longer on.
Oh, he's no longer? All right. And then there were five. All right. But for the audience members who are sticking it out, that's great. Okay, so, yeah, I'm going to mention the golf course in a bit, but just a few general comments, and then I'm going to go through, and I don't have too many. A lot of them have already been covered, obviously. But I just want to say, just overall, kind of along the, in the vein of what Lauren was saying, is it's just spectacular to live in a city with 30 parks and with a department that is with 18, I mean, that's a lot. I mean, 18 and all these, all these part-time workers who are working so hard to deliver these quality services, you know, a, what we call, what we used to call a robust effort. I grew up in San Gabriel, and there, I just looked it up on Wikipedia, we have 38,000 people in my hometown. And we have, what, about 112 or 115 in the city of Costa Mesa? 112 or 115,000. In the city of San Gabriel, where I grew up, we had two parks, Wells Park and Smith Park. And we liked it. And, and you know what? It's like, when I hear people say, we don't have enough parks, yet we have really an abundance of parks, I'm like, okay, there, I, I'm greedy, too. You know, I, I, I'm the greediest mayor that we've ever had. If we have 30, I want 32. But we have to sometimes, I think, sit and recognize what we have and appreciate it. You know, if I want, if we have one park, we want a nicer park. If we have a certain park, we want a bigger park. If we have a playground, we want a better playground. That's the nature of what we do here, constantly pushing improvement and getting the city better. But I think that this is a time for us to recognize where we're at and appreciate the work that we've done, and not only the work that we've done, but that our forefathers have done. Because you don't get 30 parks without people who are planning when they plan the city. I mean, we didn't put up 30 parks. Those 30 parks were people, were put up by people whose pictures are up on the wall and that you can find in our archives, the city council members, and people that have long since gone to their great reward. Okay? So, I appreciate them, too. And you guys are just fulfilling that legacy, so thank you. Okay? Having said that, I'm greedy, okay? So, just a few things. On slide, you don't have to go to it, okay? On Slide 11, you had a slide of Belerick Park, okay? You know what? You don't need to give me a, a update now, because we're moving on, but that area on Belerick Park, the, the little, the, the blacktop area, it really, it really needs an upgrade, and I think it would be a perfect place for pickleball, for a lot of reasons. And so, as we're thinking about how to re, you know, it needs to be resurfaced, and I know it's in the queue, but I think it'd be a, a, as a pickleball place, it would be well-received, and so I would throw that out there. It's been mentioned that we, by Andrea, that we should have more picnic tables at Neth Park. One thing that was brought up to me by the Carpenters Union is they're very anxious to do a community service project with us at our parks, and I thought that would be a perfect place to do it. Not for, we can buy picnic benches, but like in Garden Grove, they did a thing with the big Adirondack chairs and some fun stuff. So, that's something that is just purely, they're willing to do it for free, have their apprentices go up there and, and create something fun. So, I think we should take advantage of that. I know exactly how to connect you with the people that could do that.
I've been in contact with them, and we've had conversations. Excuse me. I was a little hesitant to copy Garden Grove and try to find a way to Costa Mesa spin it.
Sure, yeah.
With the City of the Arts and all, so yes, those are ongoing conversations we have. Thank you.
I'm glad you're doing that. Okay, Belerick Park, Neth, uh, Neth, Neth Park. Okay. I'm going to talk about the country club in a second. Okay. And one of the thing, this has been mentioned by some of the other council members, is this idea of, of collaborating, and I think especially ti, times, in times where our staff is tough, I'm really, for example, I was going to say we should collaborate more with ACMA, but then I learned about the WALK, you know, the crawl, I guess it is, and that we're doing that. So, all of those opportunities to avoid kind of redundancy and put our, our stuff together, that was one of the things that was the impetus of SOI coming to us, because they said that there was redundancy and essentially like, almost cannibalization. You know, we were, we were providing a similar, we were similar programming to the, to the same demographic, and if we can somehow work together, that might address our staffing problems. And you know, when we do that, the other thing that happens, and that could be happening with the school district, or ACMA, or some of the other Think Together, or, you know, any number of, of places, when we do that, the other thing is, we're going after a finite pool of staff, and we're all going after them, and so that's a problem we're all having, and that would alleviate that problem for, for both organizations. Okay, so, there's that. Oh, well, I thought about it, for example, when, I think it was Ashley mentioned clinics, that were going from leagues to clinics. Well, that would be a perfect opportunity to, especially since we're talking to them anyway over the field usage, to bring in the, the different youth leagues. And we could do clinics for free. We provide them with the, we, we, we provide them with the facility, and we say, we want you to run a clinic, and we'll provide the facility, or whatever the case may be, and then that, that might be a way to, to work with the youth leagues, so there's that. Real quick, Monique, we got to book the Tijuana Dogs, okay, for, for, right now, and also make sure that we get their, their sound guy, okay? I figured that, that saves me an email right now. Andrea is right about concerts in the park. There's no reason for us to get any static about having it at Fairview Park when we have, she said OCC, that is, really wants to work with us. And that's another example of, you know, Vanguard is another example, all these different places that are just dying to work with us. And if we do it, it, it really, it creates what, what sometimes the police call a force multiplier, you know? Then, then we can, we can, and, and they want to do it. They're, they're hungry to provide facilities and services and collaborate with us. And I know sometimes that's more of a pain than it's worth, because, you know, collaborating with somebody takes a long time, too, but once you get the rhythm of it, over time, I think it would, it will help. Oh, my goodness, let's see. Oh, this is something I've never brought up with anybody, I don't think, in the city, but I've talked to the Women's Club about it. You know, we have this, and this has to do with the senior center, and it's a little bit into a housing issue, but we have a project that, that Jamboree Housing is looking into at the, at the, at the senior center. And one of the issues that was raised is, we, we, based on the current configuration of the project, we would lose parking spaces. And that was something that was concerned a city staff. Well, then I got a call from the Women's Club, and they say, we really want to remodel, you know, the Women's Club's on 18th Street, right by Lyons Park, right by Luke Davis Field, right across from Luke Davis Field. We really want to remodel our place. Could the city help, you know, because we've got all this money, and can we help remodel their place? And I'm like, wait a minute. I said, if, if we need, if, if we, if it's so close to the senior center, if we could move some of our programming to the Women's Club, which is barely ever used, and we could also work out some deal where we help them financially with their remodel, to get it up to the code that we need to, to bring in people, that would be a win-win, I think. So, I'm going to make the connection, I don't know whether it'll go anywhere, but I'm going to make the connection to the Women's Club, because I think it's a, like, it's a win-win-win. It might help us 60 units of senior housing, some extra programming, and some facilitation of the Women's Club remodel. So, we don't need to talk about it now, but I wanted to bring it up again to save a phone call or to save an email that I don't have to write now. Um, 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 um. Let me see. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to end with the golf course, trust me. Okay, I don't need that. The Women's Club, I said that. Da, 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 da. Some of this stuff doesn't matter anymore. What is the Wedding Expo?
So, that's a, just a showcase where we invite local Costa Mesa vendors to show off the NHCC, Norma Herzog Community Center, to show what it's capable of. We just invite the local vendors, whether that's a caterer or a DJ, to show anybody who potentially wants to rent that venue for a wedding, to show them, potential vendors, and, and kind of like an open house for the Norma Herzog Community Center, so that everybody can come see it at once and meet potential local vendors.
That's great. That's great. And there is like a little bit of a, of a segue into my next topic, which is the golf course, okay? I'm really pleased that in your staff report, you, you list as part of the, on page five, as part of the responsibilities of the department, the golf course, because I've been looking for that in budget after budget after budget, and if you look at the budget write-up from last year of your department, it doesn't have the golf course. I'm glad that you now, apparently, you know, are, there's, there's someone I can go to. Jason, you're my man, the golf course man, so here it goes. So, I've been going to the golf course, I've lived in the city for 34 years, I've been going there for 34 years. The food and beverage facility has not changed in 34 years. It literally has the same, like, framed clowns in the bar. The food and beverage facility has not changed in 34 years. It literally has the same, like framed clowns in the bar that it had 34 years ago. Right? We're at a point right now where I'd say it's like degradation. We've got dry rot out there. We've got, you know, our termites or whatever. It's not even physically like, I mean, and this is a place where thousands of people a year come, and for some people, this is the only place they see in Costa Mesa. It's, to Carol, you're here, so I might as well mention something. It's $3.5 million in our budget this year, budgeted. Drops a lot of money to our budget that pays for police officers, pays for art, pays for active transportation programs, bike lanes, bull bouts, all the things that we talk about that we care about. Okay? It's in desperate need of a complete rethinking. Okay? So I want to give you the benefit of my thoughts on it. I think it needs millions of dollars in terms, and a complete, a complete blowout. Not paint, not fix the, change the clown guy or whatever, a complete remodel and a complete rethinking. More money than I think that any council would responsibly dedicate to it in a capital improvement project. Okay? And then more money than I would ever vote for. Okay? So how are we going to do that? So here's my idea. We do an RFP, and we, and this in part comes from a podcast that I did with Jeff. Jeff and I had a podcast with Mario Morovik and a guy named Jeff Chon, and they talked about restaurants and how if you have long-term commitments or if restaurateurs own the property, they'll be in a position to make major capital improvements because that they know that they're going to get that paid off eventually. So what I'd like to see, my vision, that I'd like to roll, I mean, look, and it's all about the council. I mean, I got to get four votes, okay? But is to talk about, have a discussion about doing an RFP for a long-term agreement with some restaurateur, with capitalization, the real deal, not some fly-by-night company, to partner with us and bring capital into that place, reimagine both the upstairs and the upstairs. Turn it into a, an asset that our community can be really proud of, that people from, look, Manuel's district and Arliss's district can ride the bikes down Joanne and come by Patrick's Place and go there and enjoy it. People from Tannager Park area can go walking over there. Have it full. Have it, you know, a place that's a real restaurant that we can actually make some money on. Now, the details of it remain to be determined when we figure out the RFP, but that's my idea because I don't think that we have the money to do it. So we have to create a profit motive and a private, public-private partnership. But so how do I tie this into Wedding Expo? Okay? That banquet facility on top is just not going to drive, you know, come on, people are, if you're getting married, you're not going to that place. I know recently we put carpet there and paint there and everything like that, but nobody who really is interested in a top-class wedding is going there. But it's a beautiful place. I mean, the views are spectacular. That's another underutilized asset. So the idea is to work over a period of time, you know, so maybe my timeframe, just to make sure that I'm not, you know, overburdening your department or any other department is, if by the end of this year, we could have an RFP that we could send out, that would be a home run for me. If it happens in the first quarter of 2024, I could live with it. By the end of 2024, we have somebody that we ended up in an agreement with. That would be great. Okay? The other thing is we have to adjust our relationship with Mesa Verde Partners because they still do the food and beverage. So we have to figure that out and amend that agreement. This is a big idea, but it's an idea that really I have been talking about for seven years. We've gotten, you know, very little traction, and if I don't talk about it and I don't make these points, it'll never happen, you know? So anyway, you could expect me to bring this up more, but since this was a study session and I had a little bit more luxury of time to talk, I thought I would express myself fully on it. Not expecting any, you know, comments at this point, I'm not expecting that. But you know what? Again, like I said, I'm greedy, and I want all of our facilities to be the best, and we're not even close at the, at that building and the golf course. The course is much closer, actually. The course itself is fine. We could also raise green fees with a facility like that. We could make a lot more money, and then we could do a lot more stuff in the area that all, you know, that we care about, as I said, you know, biking and safety and art and cops, things of that nature. Okay? So that's it. I've expressed myself. I'm satisfied. Jeff?
Fully, fully expressed?
Yeah, I'm done. I'm done. I'm done. I'm just calling on people from now on.
Okay. The only thing I'll, excuse me, add to that is I think it is easier and probably more efficient to try and invest in an asset like the golf course that is already performing well than to try and come up with some new ideas. And so, you know, it's often more attractive to land a new client, but sometimes, you know, your existing clients actually are a better source of referrals and future work. And I think we have an asset that, as John said, is not just something that serves Costa Mesa, it serves a broader area, and we get people from all over who come here to play, not to use the banquet facilities, but to play golf, and it's, they have an impression. I think we want to kind of sustain that and also generate as much revenue as we can.
Manuel?
Thank you. Honestly, I'll just stick to the golf course. I think the mayor has a good idea. I had my winter formal at the banquet area, had a great time. I think more folks should really, you know, we should bring our best we can to market that because it does bring revenue in. One of the things I always kind of pride myself, and I'll mention often the diet because it's not really my district, but, you know, there's not many cities that have an actual profitable golf course. That's a gem that we have, you know, prior councils actually made sure that that land was acquired to be a golf course. It is relatively affordable, none of the golf courses. I see this as a young man that struggles sometimes with money to play on the side. So I think all we can do to make it a better commodity is greatly appreciated. And again, for the formality, this thing makes us money, and it's not just folks from Costa Mesa that come. It's folks that come out of the city because it is a bit more affordable. So if we can just make a bit more money on that and make it a bit better, I'm all for it.
Okay. If everybody's expressed themselves, do you guys have any parting shots or are you good?
If I could just thank my team, Monique and Ashley and Kevin and Laura, who's taking dubious notes in the office, who has been running around like crazy helping. So thank you, Laura, for everything, and all of the staff in my department. You know, I am proud of them every single day, and it's always a pleasure to come to work, and I just want to thank them, thank the support of you, Mayor, and the council. We do feel that we get a great deal of support from you and obviously from our city manager. It's, it really is a great department to work for, and I'm someone that joined during the pandemic when it was, you know, at kind of a low place in terms of what we were able to provide to the community. So to see it grow the way that it has to now, and then to look forward with optimism about filling these positions to hopefully get us back to that pre-pandemic glory and then take it from there. So thank you so much for your time. I know this is quite a lengthy study session, but we really, really do appreciate your feedback, and I appreciate the commitment of my staff and the part-timers and everyone that we do have, as well as the support of our Parks Commission. So thank you very much.
I forgot to say one thing, okay, is I was just on a show today about real estate, and it cannot be overstated that your department and the parks that we have drive wealth to our community, drive the houses up. It's a tremendous value to our entire community, to our residents, the homeowners, and to our businesses. So thank you for what you do. You know, it's, it's an economic benefit too. It's safety, it's economic, it's fun. You do a lot more than what you think you do, I think, in terms of making the whole community better and, you know, putting kids through school and all that stuff.
I just want to, real quick, echo Jason's comments about our staff. I'm two years in, and I come from another Parks and Rec agency in South Orange County, and I could tell you that our staff's passion for what we do goes unmatched. I know I have colleagues in many other cities in Orange County that I meet with on an ongoing basis, and I think that's what sets our department apart from other ones, is that we don't just hire staff and bring in bodies, we have people that have a passion for what they do. And so I, you know, echoing Jason's statement, saying, "I appreciate it and thank them for what they do."
Any other parting shots? We're going to let Lori Ann be the closer. So anybody else? Closer, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thanks again to the team today for a great presentation. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your comments. Just wanted to wrap up a couple of key points. So we will be coming to you for some of these adjustments that we talked about tonight with rightsizing, compensation for the part-time workers, so we can fill these positions, get these, get everything back up and running to the level that it was so we could be of superb service to the community and fill some of those gaps. Come to you with some requests to convert those part-time, some part-time to full-time, again, as cost-neutral as possible. We'll be looking at that. We'll continue to look at opportunities, obviously, to improve the technology. Of course, we're working on the systems first that have the widest, broadest impact, as we discussed earlier, but that's on the list, thankfully. We agree with the facilities and asset management. In fact, we're probably going to be requesting a position in Public Works that's going to be exclusively focused on city facilities because we do have the need to make sure that the investments we have, we're, you know, reinvesting in and we're maintaining and we're keeping up to date. And then when we talk about the CIP, I'm assuming we'll have more conversation about all of the different CIP projects and their priorities, knowing that we have some that have a bit of a time constraint with the state, the county, and those need to be expended in a certain amount of time, so we'll get together on that. And last but not least, on the golf course, Mayor, thank you for mentioning that. I know we talked about it a bit this weekend. I would ask that we also consider other alternatives. I think that, I know when we were in Huntington Beach, the senior center was a very small facility, not really serving many folks, and we were actually able to issue some debt to be able to finance that kind of a structure. And so there are many different funding opportunities, private, private-public partnerships in different forms. And so I just ask that we, if we're going to go down this path, you know, a year from now, Q1 of 2024, once we get a little bit of more headwind on some of these projects that are really time-limited, that I'm very worried about being able to spend on time, that we consider even some of those opportunities because given the revenue that that facility generates, I think that there's potential to be able to create a capital fund that could actually fund a bond issuance in the near future. I was thinking about that subsequent to some of our conversations. And so I think there could be some other opportunities that would work and get us where we need to be. And so thanks again for this great feedback. We'll be bringing in Development Services at the next meeting, CIP, the one after that for study sessions, and hopefully this will help inform our work at the Strategic Planning Retreat and as we build the budget and bring it back to you. Thanks.
Thanks. We're adjourned.